Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 14th, Select Board meeting. We are here in the gall room this evening in person. We have all five members, Bill and Christina, here. A number of our various presenters throughout the evening or other town employees may join us remotely depending on where they live. We kind of left it up to everyone for their safety, what they wanted to do to get here. But the meeting is being recorded by cable access and broadcast online as well as on TV. All right, great. So with that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Do we have anything that came in for citizens input?
No.
No? Okay. And we are sitting here in an empty room. Is there anyone on Zoom for citizens input that is not one of the presenters for a later item?
Not that I'm aware of, no, I don't believe so.
Christina, the person I had told you isn't. I had a discussion with them.
Okay, that's what I was, I heard there was maybe someone coming. Okay, all right. All right, great. So we're going to start with our first item, the Building Department review of permit fees. You may recall, this item came in front of us a couple of months ago, and we had some questions for Scott. So Scott has gone back and is going to present some updates to us. And these new fees would be effective July 1st, 2023. So we have a number of items in our packet. But Scott, I'll let you kind of summarize them and let us know what you're looking for.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, member of the boards of the select board. I can never get that name right because it's since it changed.
Tripped me up at the beginning, too.
One of the things, one of the goals I had when I started was to bring forth on the permit fees that have not been revised for over 11 years for the town. As you mentioned, Madam Chair, I did bring it to the board. I did do a comp, and you requested more data. And I worked with the financial director, George, George on this, and he did a synopsis. I'm going to apologize to him right now if I butcher it tonight, but hopefully I won't. But basically, his synopsis shows that our total permits are like 80% of residential and 20% of commercial. The real number, excuse me?
Oh, I was telling Paul, Paul, could you turn it up just a tad? Thank you.
You want me to speak louder?
Yeah, I think just, I think he's turning it up a little bit, too.
Okay. The real numbers are like 77.2% and 22.7% or 8%. So for ease of things, we did 80/20. On the first page I presented to you, folks, it shows that our total revenues, if you believe it's fiscal '23, we brought in $86,000 and change in total revenues. But our building budget for residential and our building indirect costs were like $304,000. That gives you a deficit around $250,000, somewhere around there.
It goes away.
Now, on the commercial side, we've done very well, obviously. And that, we brought in about $694,000. And the total budget was probably, I do believe, I think we got a net total of $607,000 we brought in. George, step in if I'm butchering this, I apologize.
No, you're essentially going okay, so far, anyway. Go ahead.
Yeah. So basically, what's happening right now is our commercial is actually subsidizing residential. And our residential is like 80% of our work anyway. So I brought before the board tonight, and I did clean up. I did take some of your comments into effect on this. Like, like the 1%, people did not like that, and I agree. So I tried to keep it simple and do like the 55 cents a square foot right across the board. It just makes everything easier. You can't really discriminate against the square footage. You can't lie from that. But it's all there. And basically, that's what you have in front of you is what I'm proposing. Just trying to cleaning up because right now, we have, we have a new online permitting platform going before us. And today, I was hit with like eight questions and more to come on just how to navigate through our current fee schedules because it's just complicated. So I just want to try to kind of ease it up. You folks can rate it like I proposed, or you can have it stays as well. But I do ask if I could just clean up the language and try to make it more user-friendly. I can give you an example, like currently, right now, additions and alterations are like $45. The first $5,000 is $45, and it's $8 per 1,000 thereafter. That's confusing. If it was just 55 cents a square foot, it'd be so much less complicated.
Excuse me, Scott. Scott, can you just speak into the microphone? Because you're actually, when you turn your head like that, we can't hear you. So you're...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to look multitask here with the papers. I apologize.
Thank you.
Where did I lose you?
Well, I think, I think that's a good summary. We've seen this before, and they're in front of us now. I think the biggest thing is we wanted to make sure we were, you know, charging a reasonable amount for the work that it took, want to make sure that the comps are nowhere outside, like a real outlier, you know, for the citizens or the businesses here to do business in town. So are there any specific questions from the board related to these fees? I'm happy with how they're cleaned up, but I didn't know if anyone had any.
Well, I don't support any change, to be honest with you. So here's the thing. The first time around, Seth brought up a question. I don't care what the breakdown is. The department is not taking a loss. I mean, if there's a loss of, you know, $250 plus, but you're bringing in $607, I feel like the Building Department, as far as the fees go, they're there for safety in my turn. So to make sure that if I have an electrician in my house and somebody comes out afterwards, they're making sure that work was done properly. I'm not going to have a fire plumber, you know, whatever. I really don't care what they're doing in other towns, to be honest, because I did a little bit of homework. I think some of the other towns are using it as revenue because they need it as revenue. I wouldn't say we need it as revenue. I think we're nickeling and diming our residents. A lot of, I appreciate the breakdown, Scott and George. I appreciate the breakdown. But with that being said, that administration budget is already being paid from taxation. It's not, it's not broken up that way in our budget. That number's there. I understand there's a way of us saying what is actually, you know, what Bill and his staff might have to do for a building department. So there's a way for us to push off. But most of that stuff is already, is already paid from taxation. Okay? It's not paid directly from the income here. I just don't think this is supposed to be a moneymaker. I think this is a service we should be providing the town. I don't, I'm not expecting it to be for free. But if you look at this, we're $250, $350, $450, $550. We're really $350, $350, $355 in the plus. Not in the minus, if you combine it. It's one department. So based on, I think what Seth's question was, like, well, what does it cost you to run your department? So we're bringing, you know, and that's going to fluctuate from year to year, obviously. But right now, based on these numbers, we brought in $350,000 more than it costs to run his department. So I just don't think this is, should be a moneymaker for people in town that are already paying taxes. And the taxes are really what's paying his salary, the salaries of these people, not the fees. The fee, I'm guessing this money is dumping into free cash somewhere because I'm, that's what I'm assuming. But, you know, I just, you know, I just don't see the need because...
Is that, is that correct? Because we've, while he is one person, there are many building inspectors that are not, that are part-time and all that. So I understood that a lot of these fees, plumbing, electrical, other ones, are, you know, paying, they're not on a salary like Scott is.
Well, the thing is, he's showing us what the numbers were. So he, they made $350,000 last year with paying everybody out. So I'm just, I just use that as, as an example because that administration, that's Bill's number, that 547, you know, finance. I mean, these are their numbers, and then they're breaking it down to smaller amounts that would be for him. But those big numbers are in the budget, and they're already being paid from taxation. As far as, as well as the pensions, the workers' comp, the insurances, those are already being paid. So if I, if I'm reading it right, I think your department brought in $350,000 to $355,000 last year. So there isn't a loss, and that's on the existing. I just don't think there's, there's any reason to raise them.
On the, on the opposite side, though, of kind of what you say, if there is a place to make up for it that is in the market and is in line with what other towns and what contracts they're seeing elsewhere, you know, I guess I kind of see it the opposite way of why not offset, you know, some of those other things with what brings us in line? We haven't, we haven't looked at these in 11 years. You know, we've had a lot of turnover. I do value Scott's expertise in kind of what we're seeing in the market, what's, what's normal, what's average. I think everyone's got a comment. So let's, now that we've heard from you, let's hear from everyone.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, Scott, at the last meeting, I had raised the issue that I was disturbed that nothing had gone up in 11 years. You know, the fees are the same as 11 years ago. And I was really concerned with the residents getting a real hit on a percentage basis, you know, as you try to bring it into the market. Because I've looked at this more and had more time to look on it, look at it. The actual dollar increase is not that significant, you know? So I think you addressed, you know, my concern. The dollar increase is not that considerable, even if the percentage increase might be. And I think you brought us into line with the other towns that are here. And you really haven't, in my view, you know, tried to make it an excessive profit, you know? And I think, I think that issue was raised. Seth raised that issue as well, wanted to make sure that we're covering our costs at a minimum.
Doc?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback off Dennis a little bit. I agree with what he just said. I feel comfortable with the research that you did. But also, as you mentioned a little bit earlier, the simplicity of the process now or the one you're proposing versus the old one, which is kind of confusing and not very accurate. I like the simplicity of it.
And, you know, when, when it is a percentage of the value, it leaves a little bit in the hand of the applicant to, they say what the value is versus square foot is much more cut and dry. So maybe this is me talking as the daughter of a builder to understand, like, I can go in and I can say, oh, this is going to cost me $250,000. Knowing damn well, it might end up costing $400,000. And it's based on the value I'm putting in versus the square feet, which no one can dispute what the square feet is. I think it's much more black and white. Seth, any comments?
Only that I'm just not tracking the numbers, and I'm not going to vote tonight or if I, I need to spend more time with us to understand the shifts in the rates.
So I understand that, and we've had it come up once. Is it just there wasn't enough time to review it? I just, I want to be, you know, I don't want to get in the habit of us coming to the meetings and saying I haven't reviewed stuff that we have. I don't want to make a vote.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand. So let me ask the, the total that we're trying to cover is $700,000 or so?
George, if you can chime in, I do believe that is correct. No, if you're looking at...
Six...
$780,000, I think that's what we brought in at an average in nine years.
Yeah, the, what we did is we took the, the numbers that you brought in as the Building Department, okay? Not the plumbing and the gas or anything else, just simply the building. If you look at it over the past, it looks like nine years there that we have on there. The first year was $671, one year you took in $1,087,000. They average out the amount of money that we're bringing in. The Building Department is bringing in an average of $780,000 annually. That $780,000 is essentially 11% of it is the residential and 89% of it, according to Scott's figures, is the commercial. So the commercial, yes, is covering a larger portion. You're getting a lot more from the commercial money-wise than you are the residential. However, on the opposite side, he's spending more like 80% of his time on the residential. And the residential is nowhere near bringing in the amount of money that is needed to cover those types of activities during the, during the course of the year.
Yeah, and I guess I'd look at it, too, like, when we look at the town clerk's fees or the board of health fees, you know, I don't know that we've ever taken an eye to, you know, what does this cost and are we covering it exactly? It's more been about, you know, what's the right amount? What feels right? What's, where have we been historically? What are other communities doing? So, I mean, for me, I'm not personally as worried about tying it directly. I think it should be reasonable, but I'm not, I'm not feeling like we have to tie it specifically. Are there any other...
Tying it, sorry, tying it directly to what?
Like, I'm not worried about, like, it costs us this, so the permits have to equal this. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned with tying a permit fee to what it costs to cover that permit fee, just like when the town clerk's issuing dog licenses. We're not looking at, you know, what does it cost, you know, the town clerk to do it and to print them? And to have, like, you know, I think we're kind of looking at these a little bit different than some of the other fees. So I would like to move forward with this and kind of put this one to bed. Today, I think we've, we've talked about it a lot.
I mean, we talked about it for a few minutes a couple of months ago and another few minutes here. But, I mean, you spent time offline working through this and understanding, like, what does 2023 look like in terms of revenue? What is 2024? What's in the plan? What are these rates through to 2024? That's what I'm, I'm just trying to understand it before.
Are you worried that we don't have enough to cover it?
I'm not worried. I just want to see that we're covering the cost of the service appropriately, and then, you know, we can move on. And if the rates are approximately based on what it costs to provide the service, that's reasonable. It's just hard for me to tell.
Yeah, well, based on...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm going to address Stephanie's $350,000. That was mostly the North End Zone project right now, and that was a huge permit fee. We brought in almost over $1 million in that, those renovations. And that's not always going to be there. Now, to address Seth, I'm always looking at these permit fees as we go on. I try to do like an audit every three years on them just to make sure that we're comparable to other towns and we're not losing money. So I tend to, it's one of my pet peeves or one of my objectives to sit there and always keep an eye on the, on the fees and make sure that we are running smoothly and we're not losing money.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Yeah, we're not locked into these for any amount of time. If we wanted to look at them next year, 24 months, if we felt like we're out of whack, I think there's nothing prohibiting us from doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'd feel more comfortable, based on what Scott said, maybe I'd feel more comfortable looking at it next year to raise if it looked like, I mean, I don't want the department to not be bringing enough to support itself, you know? So, I mean, basically, you know, like I said, the residents are paying most of, most of what goes on in that department through taxation, based on the breakdowns. So I just think right now with the way the economy is, like, why are we gonna, why are we going to pay more on the residents whose tax money is already paying this stuff, paying, paying salaries, you know? I mean, I don't want them to lose money. But with that being said, I mean, as far as other towns, like, I already said it. I mean, there are some towns that don't, we have a stadium that brings in millions of dollars, okay? So some of the other towns may not have a revenue stream like that, and they have to. That's, you know, to bring revenues in, maybe they have to hit stuff like this, you know? I mean, just because the other towns are doing it isn't, isn't for me.
Yeah, I don't think anywhere that I've, I mean, Scott, you chime in. I don't think there's any community anywhere that it would be reasonable to not charge a building permit fee. I just wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, I prefer that they do. I prefer the people that use the service pay for it rather than spread it across the community. So, but to your point, Stephanie, let me ask, you said that taxes cover the bulk of the department? Is that what you said?
Well, if you, with the breakdown that Scott gave us, or George broke for him, like, you know, so, so these are the numbers we see in the budget. And then the allocated would be, you know, the little bits that would go to Scott's budget, Building Department. But these numbers are already covered under taxation. So that means they're covered by, under taxation here as well, as a piece of the puzzle.
Scott shaking his head, I think we should let him address.
Okay.
No, George could add into that, but I can just elaborate. The numbers that you're looking on, on the right-hand side, those are like 1/3 of 1% of the town budget that the Building Department does have to, that does support. Most of our salaries and stuff like that is done by permit fees. There are lean times when, when you have to sit there and go into the general fund and pay for our salaries. But however, we've been doing fairly well with the, with the way we have been going. Like I said, go ahead, George.
As we are moving through the budget that we're doing right now, what we're doing is, is we are combining the taxes, okay? The, the property taxes, local receipts, which includes the building inspectors, you know, revenues, as well as cherry-sheik receipts, which is state aid, which is taxes coming back to you from the state. All three of those numbers are put together to create an entire budget, which funds everything from the Building Department to the Finance Department, to the Veterans Department, to whatever, police, fire, highway, et cetera. All of those numbers go into your budget. Therefore, the amounts that Scott is looking for is a component of the budget that we are currently working on or currently have, or have worked on in the past. The question that came up, and I understand where Leah's coming from, is why would we break this down like any other? We were requested to do so by you folks the last time so you could get an idea of where everything is. In certain instances, like, let's say, I'll take the accounting office. We bring in virtually nothing as far as coming up with money to add to the pool, okay? Might take in a few dollars during the year for, 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 for copy expenses and things like that, but we bring in nothing. So all these, the piece that Scott is, is part of your local receipts, which is in or around, that's that fabled $11 million or so that we've been talking about as we've been doing this budget this year. And so it is a component of it. And ultimately, what you want to do is, it's not a question of let's just, just do it for the heck of it, but at least stay within line with where everything else is so that you are bringing in an equitable amount for the work that's being done.
All right, so George, you would agree then that, so I'm glad you said that because I forget that local receipts, that's right next to just about everything on the, on the budget. Taxation, local receipts, right, right behind it. So, but we're still $350 plus. So there's $350,000 coming in from the Building Department that is going to anywhere else in the budget that's using local receipts?
Yes, that's, that's true. But if you're trying to break it down and try to understand that what Scott does on a residential, on a residential basis, assuming you took all that other out, you're losing money in that area. So it's actually a draw on the money that he's bringing in from the commercial end.
For me, for me, I don't care. I'm looking at the big, big pool, big pool of money that comes in, just for me. The big pool of money that comes in because the taxation part of the whole budget is being paid by the taxpayer. So, so, yeah, so I don't, I don't care if it's broken down by commercial or residential. When Seth asked, I was curious what the big number was going to be. You know, what, like, was, was the money coming in covering his department? And it is plus $350,000. So that, so I understand what you're saying, though. The more, more, more of the drain is residential for sure.
Last point?
Yeah.
I need to put a head on it. It comes around to, to just simplicity and accuracy.
Yeah.
And I think, to me, that's the most important part for his department to make it run just a tad smoother.
I agree. So I'm ready to take a vote on this and...
Can I just ask what the simplicity means?
He mentioned that at the beginning, that he was feeling questions...
It's per square foot.
Well, I'm looking, most of, most of the residential ones, nothing changed from square foot to not square foot.
No, no, he's, he's going to be reviewed again, Scott. You're charging $55 per square foot.
Like, yeah.
Yeah, there was the unconditioned space on that.
Like $35.
Oh, yeah.
And now I'm, I asked to bring that up to $75, which is comparable to other towns. And it actually covers us going out and doing one inspection because our salary is a little bit more and like with the, the, the broken-down stuff that George presented to you covers that big. But like additions, alterations, and renovations, we have to figure out, like, what the total cost is. Like, right now, if it's like $245,000 to do this house, you take $5,000 off of that, and then you have to times the 24, times 8, plus the 45, and it just gets complicated with our online system. So I broke it down to square footage. And the previous meeting, I actually presented 55 cents a square foot plus 1%.
Yeah.
But everybody was happy about that 1%. And I, I totally respect that. So I took that out. So I'm just trying to simplify this the best we can and still cover the expenses of the, of the building department.
So under the old one, if you had a renovation, like the example I used, let's say you said your kitchen costs $200,000, but it really costs $400,000. There's even a little bit of gray in inaccuracy that I see in, in the dollar amount versus the square foot.
Oh, no, I like, that's, I think, the one that we said. Like, you and I could do the same exact renovation. I could use marble, you could use...
And that's the old one, whereas the proposed one just goes by square footage. I think it's much cleaner. So I think that...
Oh, that part of it, but everything else just goes up. There's the ones that, like, ones that have square footage and stuff, if you look at current, are still square footage. The ones that were just all the figures are, you know what I mean? So that's why I was...
New construction had different rates for finished versus unfinished, which is, this is just square foot. So we are way behind, and I know it's an important discussion, but I'm ready to move forward to a vote on this one. Is, are we good to move forward? And I understand if not everyone supports it, we can always bring it back. Are we...
Yes, move the question.
Okay. All right, so Dennis?
Do we have the vote?
Yeah.
Motion to approve updated fee schedule for building inspections effective July 1st, 2023 is proposed slash amended.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Have a good night. Everybody stay safe.
You, too. All right, great. And I think I saw Jake and Joe's up next. We do have a public hearing, so while we're getting everyone on, we'll have Dennis read the public hearing notice for the alteration of premises for Jake and Joe's. And I think I saw a familiar face from one of our recent meetings with Jake and Joe's as well, so go ahead and read that.
Okay, very good. The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Act Chapter 138 will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 42th Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of Grand Slam Restaurant, Foxborough LLC, doing businesses Jake and Joe's manager, Jeff Reddington, 25 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Mass, pering the premises, closing for alteration of premises for an annual all alcohol on-premises license. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
All right, great. So Jeff, can you hear us okay? We're just going to make sure we can hear you okay as well.
Yep, yep, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
We can, all right, great. And I think you were just in front of us recently. So if you can give us a little overview of your application, we do have the packet here in front of us, and then we'll see if we have any questions.
Yes, so we have...
Yes. So we have an outdoor patio structure that was built during the COVID time, and we're looking to get it as a permanent piece of our footprint here moving forward.
All right, great. I'm familiar with the with the patio. It faces kind of towards Starbucks, if I'm thinking correctly, right? So I think we've probably all seen it. Any questions on adding that outdoor patio as a permanent feature rather than just the temporary outdoor from anyone on the board?
It'll be an upgrade.
Yeah, it's there. It's there. It's done. It looks permanent already.
So no issues?
No issues.
Outdoor, I don't know.
Yeah. So they may they may take back outdoor dining. So it's kind of right now under the temporary. This would just make it permanent. I don't think we know that they had an issue recently with their license, but I don't think we've had any issues with this outdoor area. And I know I've looked at it. I I don't know that I've ever seen anyone out there. I see people more on that, like, three season porch, I'll call it. But anything, Katie, from your perspective to add concerns?
Nope, nothing for me. I mean, these, the outdoor patio is already reviewed by Police, Fire, Scott's team, planning when the temporary outdoor was opened up. And then it was recently approved by the Planning Board to go forward with their alteration as well.
All right. And there's no one here from the public, so I don't think that we have any public content. Anything else before we move to a motion on this one?
No, that's just what I wanted to hear what Katie just.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, great. So I think we're going to move to close the public hearing, and then we have a motion for the alteration of premises.
Okay, motion to approve the alteration of premises. Okay, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the alteration of premises for an annual all alcohol on premises license application for Grand Slam Restaurant Concepts, Foxborough LLC, doing business as Jake and Joe's.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Take care.
You, too.
All right, great. Next, we have the Orpheum. And I have spent quite a bit of time with Catherine and Jim on this one. They have put a lot of thought into this. So this one is not a public hearing. We're just going to make sure we can hear you. Okay, and that you can hear us. Okay. Can you hear us? Okay?
We can hear you.
Yeah, yep, that's fine.
All right, great. So if you can briefly give the board an overview of your application for the change of manager, and then we'll see if the board has any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll start it off. For the record, my name is Jim DeValice, and I'm here tonight as President of the Board of Directors for the Maryland Rodman Arts Center, formerly known as the Orpheum. And we are requesting a change of alcohol managers. The MRPAC, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and it's run by a board of directors, all volunteers. Some of them are on the on the meet on the hearing tonight, or the meeting tonight. And I'll just briefly introduce the managers. I'm sorry, the Board of Directors. So Rachel Calabrese, she's the Vice President. Jared Craig is the Assistant Vice President. Paul Beck is the clerk. Eve Keady and Sue Dring are treasurer and co-treasurer. And the other board members are Jim Slattery, Bevy Lord, Kevin Powers, Frank Reynolds, John Turner, Marion Finney, and Scott O'Donnell, and Tiffany Elliott. So collectively, we run the theater and responsible for the application. Bob Saitman, who's on here, has been with us from day one. He's the Director of Finance and Operations and the Technical Director, in case there's any questions tonight. I'll be introducing Catherine Miller in a minute, who's our Executive Director since 2020. And she's the focus of the application to be manager. For the board members that were here and recall back in 2019, Rob Canfield came in with us as the applicant as the beer and wine manager, and it was granted. So five years ago, Rob Canfield became the manager. Past five years, we've had zero problems, zero complaints, and zero violations. And that's something we're very proud of. It's okay with the board. And briefly, I'd like to give some highlights since 2019, the last time that we were in front of you. During COVID 2020, we closed as mandated by the state. Now, at a time when most small venues like our theater didn't make it, we stepped it up a little bit when we closed. We hired Catherine in 2020, when the other theaters were laying off. With Catherine's hard work, as well as the other board members and the staff and a lot of community volunteers, we came out stronger during that time by improving the building. Building, if you've been in it years ago, we joke that anytime that there's an event and it's raining, we're moving the rubber bands and tarp so it doesn't fall on any of the 386 seats that we have in there. So over the last couple of years, we put a brand new roof on the theater, brand new heating system, new air conditioning system, new performance lighting, brand new state of the art sound system. We upgraded all of our fire suppression, protection, and alarm systems. We upgraded the upper lobby, so now we can have smaller venues for the community that they seem to enjoy. We painted the entire inside of the seating area for the theater. We upgraded the entire stage on the top and in the front. And we just got finished applying for a grant to paint the outside of the building, all new doors, trim, and upgrade the plaza to hopefully have seating and the cap to accessibility and railings for safety. So we're finding out in May if we get that grant. These improvements were very, very expensive. And I say that not to not to brag about it, but as a statement of gratitude. We got these grants because the community stepped up on our behalf. A lot of these grants were 50/50. We'd get a dollar, but we had to raise a dollar. So the community stepped up, a lot of people from town government. Leah, as Chairman, you wrote us a letter on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, recommending us for some of these grants. Bill as Town Manager, Paige as a Planning Department, State Representative Barrow, Senator Feeney, all collectively at one point over the last couple of years, kind of jumped in and said we were worth the investment. And we appreciate that. It doesn't go unnoticed. Along with the brick and mortar improvements that we did to the theater, we spent a lot of time trying to trying to get a goal of generational involvement. So it's sustainable over time. So we're not month to month. We can step aside and grow a little bit. We created youth programs where we're getting young students involved and subsidizing those that can't afford to participate in the arts. You see us opening our doors for a lot of the town and community events. We put up congratulation signs to, you know, raise the spirits when when people need it in town. 2022, we had over 100 events, 10,000 patrons come through the door. Not bad for a theater that has no parking and one small popcorn machine. We've got two full time staff, 10 part time staff, and over 100 volunteers that we coordinate to come through, all fully trained. 2022, we're responsible for almost a half a million dollars in economic impact dollars that went back into our community, from locally purchased sales payments to operational contractors like cleaning, cleaning staff, sound, lighting staff, payment made to artists and renters that came in. We give back just as much as we we bring into the doors. This license that we're in front of you tonight allows us to exist. It allows us to bring in national entertainment venues, which you're starting to see now, and allows us to grow. To tell you the truth, if you've ever seen a Laura Canfield show, a little wine goes a long way to people to enjoy that. It was a joke a little bit, you know, Laura. So, you know, we we spent a lot of time coordinating, training the people, and making it a safe environment, because we know the importance of this license. So at this time, I'll kind of go offline a little bit. I'm going to introduce you to Catherine. And she's the one that's on the application. She's been there, like I said, for going on three years now, in those the ins and outs of the operations. I'll hand it over to Catherine.
Thanks, Jim. Hi, everyone. I just want to thank you all again for your support. And if you have any questions for my application, I'm happy to answer them.
So I'll update the board a little bit. I've never seen someone so thorough at making sure they understand the regulations and what they need to do. You know, Catherine is very thorough, and she really wanted to understand everything. I did have a meeting with her and and Jim to make sure she understood the responsibilities she was taking, the tips training, kind of everything. I think she may have known some of the town regulations even better than me. So I can say, based on, you know, even just going to the theater last Friday night, stopping in Thursday when they weren't even open to buy tickets for a show, I'm really comfortable having Catherine on the license because she is the person that's there kind of the most full time, not just a volunteer, and it's a big job. So I have full confidence that she understands and will take this very seriously to help the theater continue to survive, thrive, not survive. Any questions from the board?
I just say, just from a point, what you said is actually very significant, because at one time, they were just trying to survive.
Right, right.
Now they are truly thriving, which is amazing to me. And I have to I have to congratulate you all, Jim, you know, Catherine, everybody at the theater has done a tremendous job of making that such a success. So I just want to see it continue to thrive. I mean, it's I can't believe how far it's come, believe it or not. It's really come a long, long way.
Yeah, and I think we have to plug, too. Catherine put together an event that's going to be on March 28. We're trying to get Foxborough Common Business Collaborative more, more thriving than it is right now. And she put together an event that she wants to highlight how how the theater in Shovel Town are working together and open the doors and have people come in and tour the theater and sample some beers. So the list just goes on and on with all the great things that Catherine is doing, you know, uptown, the whole area as well as the theater. So it's very much appreciated, Catherine. I could got a little teary eyed on Friday night at the sold out show, you know, seeing that wonder. It's really is amazing. So thank you.
Thank you. We enjoy doing it. And it's it's great for us, too, to see the community enjoying it. And I will just, you know, hammer home the point, hammer home the point that safety is always the most important thing for our patrons. It's safety first and then enjoyment. So we look forward to continuing to do that.
All right. So I think with that, we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Motion to approve the change of manager application for the Foxborough Regional Center for the Performing Arts, doing business as the Orpheum Theater, from Rob Canfield to Catherine Miller.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to say, say thanks, what everyone said, Jim, you, your board, your staff, it's been wonderful. And I have one quick question. Is it is it going to be painted pink again? Or are you guys going to change the color? Have you decided?
That's the question of the day. There's a little bit of a mix on that. But we're we'll see after May when we get the grant. If that's our hardest question, that we're in good shape.
There we go.
I also just wanted to mention Skip Barry's on the line here also. He's one of our board members. And I forgot to mention, he lives right next to Town Hall, and he's been very involved in with the theater as well.
Great. All right. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. So up next, we have a common VIC application for Crumble Cookies. Do we have? All right, Dennis, are you are? I see your shirt. I assume you're a Crumble Cookie guy.
I am.
All right, I have a 13 year old and an 11 year old. They are so excited. So tell us a little bit about the application in front of us.
All right. Well, Crumble Cookies is, as I wouldn't anticipate, it's a cookie shop and a nationwide franchise, over 800 locations or approximately 800 locations. I already have locations in Worcester and in Attleboro. I'm excited to be bringing a franchise to Foxborough, well under construction now. We're hoping to open possibly in the next 30 to 45 days. I'm also very proud and happy that we are able to bring over 50 jobs to the community, a lot of those part timers and high school and college kids as well. So the really unique thing about Crumble is that it's fun, and it keeps it fun by every week we change our cookie flavors. So we have six cookies every week, and every week they change. So it keeps everyone coming back in and trying to find out what they are. So it keeps it very fun and exciting.
Now I don't have to drive down to Attleboro anymore.
Exactly.
Well, and believe it or not, I never mind Attleboro, I have a daughter at Worcester State. So she and her friends are frequent flyers at your place. And and they have made their way home to Foxborough when she's come home on the weekend. So I've had the cookies as well. They're phenomenal.
And I just see a note here that we need your workers comp affidavit before you open. You're looking at early April, and you're working with the Board of Health on all your food permit and health inspections. So anything else to add, Katie, or is that everything else is in good order for us?
Yep, everything else is in good order, and we'll just wait for Board of Health to do their final inspection before we issue our common VIC.
All right, great. Any questions from the board? All right, I think we're ready for a motion on this one.
Okay, motion to approve the common fictional license application for above the line 3LLC doing business as Crumble Cookies.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Welcome to Foxborough, Dennis.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. And then another Patriot Place one. I see Mr. Miller is here. So we will ask you to just keep it brief, since I think Fat Tuesday was just in front of us. So if you and I think at that time, you had told us as well that the manager at the time was kind of temporary until they hired someone, if I'm remembering correctly. So, Mr. Miller, if you can just give us a quick overview of the change of manager application here.
Absolutely, Chairwoman Gibson. Members of the board, Tom Miller again here before you on behalf of Fat Tuesday. I'm joined by Dennis Brewer, who is the proposed manager of record. He's a US assistant. He's tip certified. He's very experienced in the food and beverage industry. He's familiar with the laws of the Commonwealth, the ABCC, Foxborough Zone Regulations for the Sale and Service of Alcohol. He's been in the restaurant industry for many, many years. He's worked in restaurant management for more than a decade, including as a bar manager and a general manager. He has a very in-depth knowledge of how best to, very in-depth knowledge of the, you know, safe sale and service of alcohol, how to run a restaurant appropriately. He's a he's a really good applicant, a really qualified applicant for this position to replace Sammy as the permanent manager of record for Fat Tuesday. He has reached out to Tom at Fox Cares, so he's going to be connecting on that and be and work with them to continue to operate with best practices. We want to thank you for hearing this application, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I always appreciate when the service says tips licenses right in the application packet. So thank you for that. I don't have any questions. Does anyone else have any questions? I did have a chance to stop in. It's cool. There's like a little neon wall. It takes a nice picture. So any questions from the board? All right. With that, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, motion to approve the change of manager for 190 Octane Patriot Place LLC, doing business as Fat Tuesday, from Sammy Guerrero to Dennis Brewer.
Second.
And under further discussion, sorry, Katie, I skipped over you. Anything else? Any concerns? Anything to add? My apologies.
Sorry, nope, nothing for me. I'll say Tom submitted everything. It looks great. So we can submit to the ABCC tomorrow morning.
All right, great. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lots of Dennisists tonight.
Yeah. All right, great. So moving along, what do we have next? So we have the additional budget request positions review. And I can't believe Chris got in a button down shirt. I imagine he just came from from plowing her on the road. So you didn't need to do that. But we have Chief Michael Keller here to talk about the two fire positions. And then we have our DPW Director, Chris Gallagher, to present his positions as well. So up to you. If you guys want to come up one at a time, if you want, just both come up.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Tag team.
Just give you my high key and people at home.
All right. So we do have your package. Thank you for sending that in advance. If you can give us, I know some of us may have been here, like, I know some people, Seth and Stephanie, heard your presentation. I heard your presentation at AdCom. So if you guys can give us kind of an overview, and then after this, we're going to talk about free free cash. And then hearing about these positions will help us vote on the budget kind of right after. So.
Awesome. So I'll try to make this as brief as possible. So by every metric, every kind of, you know, everything we look at, run volume, population, things like that, we've even had a study done, an independent study, they recommend that we are understaffed. We are lean. So I'm going to just take you through a quick presentation. We'll look at some numbers and things like that. Any questions you have. But, you know, I won't repeat everything that Chief Grace mentioned the other night. We're suffering from a lot of the same things. They they suffer from, you know, lean staffing, worst overtime, things like that. So, you know, a lot of those those things that he's dealing with in his organization, we are as well. So just wanted to kind of mention that. I won't belabor the point. I just wanted to get that out there. So right now, we're running eight personnel shift. So right now, we're running eight personnel a shift. We have, this is our deployment strategy. So we have basically staffed a fire engine that has one captain, one firefighter on it. We have a ladder truck that, we have one lieutenant, one firefighter on it. We have a primary ambulance and then a secondary ambulance that also staffs a secondary fire engine. So those people cross staff both trucks. So last year, our primary fire engine did 2,400 calls. Our ladder truck did 856 calls. Our primary ambulance did 2,300 calls roughly. And then between the second fire engine and second ambulance, they did, those two trucks combined did 1,054 calls. So when you look at that, that's kind of how the workload is distributed. Last year, we started, the people on the ladder truck started staffing a second ambulance, which, I'm sorry, a third ambulance, which did another 250 calls, bringing, you know, those two people assigned to that, you know, responded over 1,100 calls for the year.
So they switch between those vehicles, is what you're saying? Okay.
They bounce back and forth. So one of the challenges with this deployment model is, as you can see, now we're staffing three ambulances. So those three people, those three pieces with each of our firefighters, so those are firefighters and paramedics, they kind of dual role. Once they're gone, they're gone, you know. Today, we had an ambulance at Newton Wells. We had an ambulance in Boston and we had an ambulance in Brockton. So, I mean, they're way, way out. So that leaves two people, sometimes one person, back to cover the station. The other problem is there's no fat here. So if we have somebody that's out on, so we budget, we cover all vacation, holiday and personal leave. That's in the budget. So we know that number is, that was something we did a number of years ago. That's in the union contract. So that gives them a baseline staffing. But if someone calls out sick, if someone, you know, gets injured in line of duty, we have to pick one of those trucks doesn't go out because we don't have the extra staffing. So it's very lean and as you can tell, two people on each piece, that's not optimal. Additionally, we had to call in an additional ambulance 80 times over and above what we did as far as call volume. So it's just.
So that's another town had to come in and help us because we were too tied up.
Yep. Yeah. So basically, we're at capacity. I mean, that's kind of the message here. We're at capacity. You know, there's not much more we can do as far as, you know, what we provide for service. No other town around us really provides an ambulance. Our call volume has exploded, you know. So I don't, you know, I don't have, there's not like one anomaly. I mean, it's busy. We have the highways, you know, there's a lot of motor vehicle accidents. We deal Patriot Place, you know, during the day, it's a medical community. At night, it's a bar and restaurant scene that keeps us busy 16 hours a day when they're open. So from the time, you know, there's people up there for different reasons. And those reasons kind of overlap with our service delivery. We have 10 hotels. You know, the hotels are very busy, you know, brings people from all over. And we end up at the hotels a lot and, you know. So when we look at things like the Walnut Street project, that's going to send us over the edge. We can't keep growing and not grow with the community. So that's kind of, you know, one of the issues we're having as we're growing and we want to build more. We need to be able to upstaff to provide those services. So again, when we benchmark ourselves against other communities, again, I talk a lot about the SEMRECs communities. The, you know, the selectmen at the time, everybody agreed that those communities were very similar to Foxborough. We have similar call volumes, things like that. So that's why the split with SEMREC is the way it is. Because we agreed we're very similar. When you look at the budget, the number of firefighters per shift, and then the call volume, Foxborough has the lowest number of firefighters per shift, but we have one of the highest call volumes. Really, we're neck and neck with Easton as far as call volume, who has another like 10,000 people in their population. Population and call volume are two different things. Population isn't really reflective of how busy we are. So you can see, you know, we ended last year with 4,126 calls. What's nice about this view here is this is apples to apples. This is 911 calls, fire alarms. These are emergency responses. So there's no fluff. There's no, you know, we don't call two calls for one, you know. That's the number and everybody's measuring the same. So we're all applying the same data collection. So it's a very clear picture of what we're doing. And then I wanted to just kind of look around. So if you look at a town like Seekonk and a town like Westwood, very different, you know, very different demographically, socioeconomically. And you look at the population, they both have less of a population in Foxborough. And they're both, they both have more staffing than Foxborough. Westwood, 10 a shift, you see, Conk, 9 a shift. So again, that's just another indicator that we're lagging as far as staffing. So we've had about a 29% increase in call volume since 2020. So this is just another important piece of it. So not only are we experiencing high call volume, one of the, you know, mitigating factors is our utilization. Our utilization's gone way up because, you know, over the years, you know, through hospitals closing and then, you know, a couple of disasters, Brockton Hospital and most recently in Norwood Hospital flooding out.
No, I was just going to, this is one of the things really caught my eye. So who's doing your medical control nowadays with all these hospitals offline?
So we had a medical control physician, so we have two medical controls. So we have a service medical director, which is, was a doctor that was employed by Norwood Hospital. Now he's over at Good Sam. And then we have our overall medical control is out of sturdy. So we had kind of had to shift.
Are you seeing your paramedics doing much more in the field now with, because you're moving the EAS into the field, really, basically?
Yeah. So now where we would, you know, we'd start on a treatment protocol. And as we would kind of get through that treatment protocol, we'd get about 15 minutes into the call. We'd be at Norwood Hospital. We'd hand them off. That was 80% of the time. Now we're getting further and further into those protocols and, you know, because we're taking care for the patient for a prolonged period of time, especially when, you know, you look at going to Boston in the afternoon was rush hour and things like that and the traffic. So we're certainly spending more time with the patient. The paramedics are utilizing more medication, more skills on those patients because, you know, because we are with them for a prolonged period of time now. So this is interesting. This is the late 90s. These are the hospitals that were available to us. And when you see, a lot of them, you know, we had, we had Goddard Hospital and Stone that closed in the late 90s. We used to have Southwood Hospital. When I first got on, Southwood Hospital was right over the line in Norfolk. It was fantastic because we could be back in, you know, 10 minutes, drop somebody off. We'd be right back in town. We could take calls out of the emergency room. But now, when you look at it, and most recently with Brockton, that just puts more pressure on the region because we were, our overflow was going to Good Sam and Brockton. So they have the cath, they're one of the closest cath labs we have. So if you have a cardiac issue, you know, one of the cures for that is a cardiac catheterization. They have a cath lab at Brockton. So we're going to Good Samaritan in Brockton for that service now. But they're so overwhelmed there because of the closure of Signature Healthcare in Brockton, the other hospital. It's just, it's causing, it's causing a massive disruption in healthcare in the region.
I think I saw you on the news too about that. Like it seems like you're kind of leading the charge too with, like, you know, being loud about it.
We are, yeah. Because I mean, we're going to have, you know, we're inviting hundreds of thousands of people here, you know, over the course of the summer and the fall. And, you know, there's not a lot of capacity for overflow, as you can see. And look at the beds we've lost, you know, you think about this, you know, I think Norwood had 68,000 hospital visits a year in their emergency room. Those 68,000 people are going other places. So aren't the 50,000 people that went to Signature Healthcare in Brockton, those people are going other places. So when you look at the, you know, that saturation of those emergency rooms now. The other thing people don't talk about is Pataca Memorial right over the line closed right before COVID. So all of that volume's coming up to sturdy as well. So we, you know, it's really an issue. And that's what I've been trying to highlight. You know, we're receiving kind of a lukewarm response from the state as far as like help, but keep beating that drum.
And you're almost losing Good Samaritan as well, basically.
They told us not to go to Good Samaritan unless it's a.
Because I'm from Stone and Good Samaritan's right there.
Yeah, so the state came down.
That's what I heard. People telling me that they're just like, no, you have to go somewhere else. We just don't, the emergency rooms are full. They just can't, can't take anybody there. So you're almost, they're open, but you've pretty much lost them.
Yeah, yeah. So not only are we experiencing that exploding call volume, but now this issue is just compounding it. So it's just, and it's something that's not going to be fixed. I don't, you know, Brockton Hospital, they're saying a lot of the same things that they said about Norwood. We're going to have it open in 90 days, all this other, none of that ever materialized. I mean, if you look at Norwood now, it's a vacant parking lot. There's a bulldozer that just pushes dirt from one end of the lot to the other. I don't see a lot of.
Are they saying three years? Is that even, I don't even know. I think it would cost to put up a house or a building. I can't even imagine a hospital.
Yeah. And you think of all the regulations. I think the only other thing, the only thing that's more regulated than a hospital is a nuclear power plant. So if you think of the bureaucracy, that the hoops they're going to have to jump through to build that hospital, it's probably, I'd be lucky to see it by the end of my career. So.
And I've said, whatever we can do as a board to help, you know, with our state leaders or, you know, just let us know how we can help because it's a concerning problem as a resident and, you know, as a board. I think both, it's concerning.
Yeah. What concerns me is like we said, we're at capacity. So any anomaly, like a bus accident or something, you know, some tragedy, it's going to, it's just something that produces more casualties is going to cause an issue in the, you know, the healthcare system, so.
Well, kind of where the rubber hits the road, I was reading, is your runtimes. And you're getting up over eight minutes, you know, and that gets pretty serious for area residents, you know. That's life or death sometimes, that two minute differential, so.
Absolutely.
In terms of the staffing, that really caught my eye.
So, and you had asked last time, Lee, about, you know, alternative funding sources and grants and things like that. And I think we've been very successful and we're pretty aggressive in our pursuit of alternative funding sources. I think our grant success, we probably took the largest capital purchase that the town would have to make as far as vehicles and equipment with a federal grant for our ladder truck. That's about a million dollars. That was, that's about a million dollars in 2019 money. I don't know what it is today, but it's pretty significant. It's not a million dollars anymore. So we've been very lucky as far as federal grants. You know, the apparatus maintenance program has been very successful, gotten some attention statewide. You know, other people are copying that model. We were able to generate $100,000 in public health revenue just by delivering vaccines, doing COVID testing and things like that. I think a great example of that is the Community Emergency Response Social Worker Program. We sacrificed an existing FTE, an administrative staff member to kind of pivot and, you know, recognizing that need and sacrificing on the administrative end, picking up on the, you know, Community Emergency Response Social Worker because, you know, we felt it was that important. So all the peripherals, we either paid for by grants or laptop computer, you know, equipment, software, things like that. And then some of the larger capital items we paid for out of the public health revenue because, you know, it's directly related to public health. So we were able to buy a vehicle for that person. So none of that actually hit the taxpayer. So we were really proud of that endeavor. You know, it's a little extra work for us in the fire department because of the administrative gap. But, I mean, we were able to make that up and really provide what we feel is a necessary service, you know, to citizens. The other good news is that we got a 40% increase in Medicaid funding right before Secretary Sutter's left office. So a lot of our stuff is funded out of ambulance receipts. You know, positions, some of our budget is funded out of ambulance receipts. So that increase will help. The Medicaid funding is our lowest here. So. So I think that was about it. If there's any questions.
Chief, does this get us to nine, nine per shift, nine heads or?
No, this gets us halfway there. So my original proposal was about 200,000 to stagger in four people in the next fiscal year. Discussion to bill that was reduced to two. So that gets us halfway there. So we really need four to make it nine across the board.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I know that, I think they're going to be hanging around just in case anything comes up, right? I don't know, Chris, if you can, I know you've got a busy night, but. Any questions before we move on to DPW? Okay.
We only have two slides. Stay up here with you.
Sure, we're not.
All right. All right. So I've got two positions we're looking to add to the DPW. The first of which is in the water and sewer department. So this is an admin position in the office, coordinated position. I don't have all the fancy metrics that police and fire do. DPW does not compare ourselves to each town the way that police and fire do. We just don't have those metrics in place. We're working on it nationally, but we don't have them right now. But, you know, some of the historical data, the office has had three admin staff for at least the last 25 years. Eileen Hurley recently retired, actually a year ago retired. She was here as part of that, you know, three member staff 25 years ago. The town has grown, at least in water customers. In that timeframe, we had over 50% growth in the water department for customers. So population hasn't increased that much, but, you know, as far as water customers, we have grown in the water department. Some of the things that we're struggling with right now, DEP and EPA, the regulating agencies for the water department, have increased what we need to do for them. A lot of it is paperwork and a lot of it is just administrative work, collecting data. Some of the, the, some of the things they've added to us recently, the lead in copper sampling program, PFAS testing. We have recently, last year, went through an M36 water audit. And I will say, I do have Bob and Lance are on Zoom. So if there's, you know, some specific questions on the water side of things, Bob can jump in. Although he'll happily sit quietly and just listen. That M36 water audit was a grant program through the state, through DEP that brought a third party into our system and looked at every nook and cranny of what we do to find out where we can improve our systems. So we actually have a second round of that audit this year. One of the things that they did come out with was, you know, lack of redundancy and resiliency within the admin side of things. The biggest point of failure is our billing. We have one admin that does the billing. The other two just don't have time with all these other programs in place to learn that software and to be that backup person. So we have a large meter program. Historically, we had just let plumbers decide what size meter was needed for every building that was having, getting a water meter in town. That has led to a lot of issues with not collecting correct flow through those meters, not having the right sized meters. So they're either too small or too big. So we now have a right sized meter program. Every time somebody comes in looking for a water meter, we put it through a process. So that's reaching out. We actually have a third party. We have a vendor that does that for us. So it's following that paperwork all the way through. Our asset management, we now have three green sand filter treatment plants in the system over the last 12 years. Every part in those treatment plants is supposed to be accounted for. Every pump, every motor, every filter, every component is supposed to be on an asset management program. And again, we just, the staff that we have just has not had the time to go through and do that, put that paperwork together and actually put a plan together for that. One of the biggest things recently is our unaccounted for water leak detection. Great story after probably four or five years of having not great unaccounted for water. We found a major leak actually at the old laundry building. We were losing roughly 750,000 gallons a day of water into that building. We produce about 2 million gallons a day. So we were losing, we were losing 40% of our water while we were pumping out of the ground in the basement of that building. It was then just going under the railroad tracks into the Ponson River. So that was, you know, we have been doing that. But again, it's just one of those extra programs that we need to do and there's a reason to do it. The system's old. And those leaks are there and we just need to be, you know, working through the system to find those leaks. What's happened over the last few years is that the staff that we have has been focusing on what's required by DEP and EPA. And a lot of the local stuff that our water and sewer commissioners are requesting us to do has kind of fallen off. One of the biggest things that we started a couple of years ago was our collections. So we used to just, if somebody didn't pay their bill, you know, once a year, it just went out to lean once it hit above a certain dollar amount. A few years back, we actually had started a collections program locally within the department. If somebody was 60 days past due, you know, we were actually reaching out to them. And if they needed to get put on a payment plan, we were putting them on a payment plan. A lot of people just were struggling. Once you miss a bill, it's one of those things, it's hard to catch up sometimes. So we were working on putting them on a payment plan. We had half a million dollars of outstanding bills. And this is stuff that was like several years old. And within, you know, six months, a year, we had dropped that number down to almost, you know, half. So the water and sewer commissioners have said, we want our money. We want. So the water and sewer commissioners have said, we want our money, we want it now. So they they would like to see that program get implemented again as one of the local initiatives that we're we're just don't have the time to do. I said it earlier, redundancy, resiliency, we just don't have the backup for that billing. You know, Bob had actually asked one of the vendors who does billing for some municipalities and has the abilities to do that, what it would cost for him to come in on a monthly basis and do our our readings and do our billing. I think he was, you know, $25,000 a month to come in and do that work. So if if our primary admin for that work gets hit by a bus, you know, that's the term. If somebody gets hit by a bus, what happens? There's nobody to do that work. We're gonna pay a vendor, you know, close to $25,000 a month to come in and do that. This is enterprise fund, so it is split the same as the rest of the admin and water technicians' positions. It's 90% paid out of the water and 10% out of sewer. So it is an admin, it's an enterprise fund expense. The water and sewer commissions has been requesting for at least the last five years for this position to get added in for a lot of the reasons listed above. So that's the water and sewer coordinator position.
Is that paid for by water receipts and sewer receipts?
Correct.
This new person will be paid?
Yes. So that'll be paid based on the the rates that people pay when they use their water. So that's water and sewer bills.
Okay.
So not general fund money.
Okay.
And this was a position that I had actually recommended to the board for consideration and the budget just before COVID hit. And we had to go back and change it. So they've gone an extra two or three years without it because of that.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. So there is an actual revenue offset by adding this position.
So this
jumps in that revenue.
So so this this does not, this gets paid off of and will get factored into the rate increase and the rates that are being charged for water and sewer use.
Okay, but it's built in?
Yes. Yeah.
And the commission who sets those rates is in favor of us?
Correct. Yeah, so the the enterprise budget is actually their budget. So the water and sewer budgets that come forward at town meeting and go through advisory committee, they're not they're not select board budgets. They're actually water and sewer commission budgets. So they they vote those, they approve those. The recommendations to to town meeting come from that board. All right, and the other position is a highway labor driver position. This goes back to 2020, again, another position just before COVID. I was actually requesting an additional mechanic at the time. So we were at the time staffed with three mechanics, which again was historical staffing level for over 50 years over in the DPW. The the town and what the DPW maintains is 160 registered vehicles. So that's everything with the license plate that gets driven on the road, every heavy piece of equipment that the DPW has. We do everything except for the fire apparatus. So police cars, school buses, COA facilities, which is central maintenance, which is new. Over the years, the water and sewer department used to just send their stuff out to a garage or they'd fix it themselves. That has now, since we're a DPW, that has come back to the DPW as an increase. We were in that 160 pieces. We were roughly 54 pieces of equipment per mechanic. That is one one stat I do have is the industry standard is roughly 35 to 40 pieces per mechanic. And unfortunately, what was happening was school buses are priority, police cars are priority. The DPW stuff was kind of last on list. So, you know, any storm storms were coming up. You know, we had to go through and make sure everything was ready to go. We were falling behind on on our own equipment while we were maintaining those other priorities. I hate to say it, but the the police department has added quite a few vehicles over the years, a lot of detail vehicles that are, you know, important to have out on the roads when we're doing construction. But there there has been growth in that over the years in that, you know, last 20 years. So what we had done during COVID was we had an employee leave from the highway department. We had a laborer leave. Working with Bill and my staff, we realized that the need was really over in the in the mechanic's garage at that time. During COVID, things had kind of slowed down a little bit on the streets. We didn't have as much money coming in for road construction. So the highway crew kind of pulled back a little bit on their end. And actually, the supervisor was was willing to give up that position on the short term and relocate that that funding and that position to the mechanic. So back in 2021, we had actually relocated or reallocated that funding, hired a fourth mechanic, got that staffing level where it should be. I'm now back looking for to backfill that highway position that was that was dropped off of that that division budget. Some of the things that we've been working on and growing, stormwater requirements continue to grow. Our MS4 permit is in now, it's in it's in its second term, second permit. We're five, almost five years into that permit. It's a 10-year permit. And those requirements include catch basin cleaning and measuring. So those catch basins need to have a sump, a depth below the pipe, less than 50% full. So we're working on getting all those measurements. We go out every year, try to clean them all and work on on the catch basin cleaning program. We're doing drainage reconstruction. That's always been one of those unfunded utilities. There's no water sewer enterprise money to do drainage work. So a lot of it we're doing in-house. When it breaks, when there's a hole in the road, we'll go dig a pipe up. We're, you know, we're kind of struggling a little bit with that based on just being down a person in that. Street sweeping is is another thing. We have to do that twice a year. A lot of that has actually shifted. It used to just be an overtime function. We've shifted a lot of that to daytime work so we can actually make up some ground during the daytime hours. That street sweeper is usually out for six to eight weeks every spring and every fall. So it's just adds a body to be able to do that during the daytime and continue with some of the other options, other work tasks we're doing. Again, roadway maintenance, you know, as this is a highway position, we're gonna be, you know, looking to do crack filling on the roads, pothole patching. We have sidewalk repairs and ADH transition plan that we're working through. And then as we're dealing with tonight, snow removal. So this is this is a position we're really looking to backfill from two years ago when we reallocated that funding over the equipment maintenance division.
All right, great. And I forgot to ask you, Chief Kelleher, but both of these are to be hired. Just remind us of the dates. This is one of the ones that would come in at the start of the year is ideal?
Mine mine would be the start of the year, yep.
Okay.
I think we had one in July, one in January.
January.
One in January, yeah.
We split them, we split them.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Chris, the the water and sewer position, is this just to get you guys to have that backup person for billing? We're not gonna, we're not gonna see monthly wa- monthly bills if this person comes in?
At the moment, there is there's been no direction to go monthly billing.
Okay.
We have changed or are in process of changing our reading software, which will make it easier to collect readings on a monthly basis. That is important for us to get those readings. The unaccounted-for water is one of those things that's important for us to get. The way that the billing is staggered right now, we don't have a simple way, really, we don't have a way to know what we build, what we pumped out of the ground and what we build on a monthly basis. We have some very, very delicate math that we do to to go through what we what we bill versus pump on an annual basis. But we do stagger because it's a quarterly billing system. We don't read every meter every quarter. It's staggered.
Yeah, that yeah, that makes sense.
But at the moment, there is no directive that is that is the purview of the water and sewer commission if they decide to do it.
Came up before, it was, I I didn't feel, I know advisory committee wasn't that keen on creating a position then to change to, and I don't think there was an appetite for people to get a monthly bill. So I just want to make sure this is this is because you guys, you guys need this right now.
Are you talking about years ago? Because I haven't heard the monthly thing this year.
It was about three or four years.
Oh, okay, so we're going back a couple of years.
Yeah, because he's he's been asked this position for five years. I I just felt like
At least.
Yeah.
Back to Roger, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I can get, I feel just for myself, I feel like I can get behind you when you're when you're like, I I need somebody.
There is plenty for this this position to do besides going monthly billing.
And we've heard so much about roads and sidewalks too, and if we're going to make progress there, we probably.
Yeah, yeah. I just I just feel like the the census, you know, and things change, you know, it's up to the people at town meeting. Not not me to say, but didn't seem like there was an appetite to to then create a position so you can go to to monthly billing.
No, there's plenty of other work to be done.
Need you need for now.
I mean, to that, there are still people there, and and I know Bob has talked to to more people than I have about it, but there are certainly people that have asked for more frequent billing. Because what happens is they get a running toilet or a leak in their in their house and now they're 90 days out, depending on when that leak started. And all of a sudden, they're getting a bill that's, you know, three times what they would normally get charged. You know, if we're doing it on a monthly basis, you know, we see that information and we do, we call them. As soon as Cheryl sees a reading that's high and the fact that she can read, look through and just knows historical data, she's calling those residents to say, hey, you may want to check your toilets, you may want to do this, you may want to look at this. So, you know, if we can do that more frequently, there are people that are gonna benefit from that. But that's that's not on the table at the moment. We haven't been asked to do that recently, so.
Okay, great. All right, so I think another piece for us to just talk about, and we can do it now, we can do it later, is to understand what these positions cost annually, full year, recognizing some of them may come in mid-year. I think just to compare apples to apples. You know, with the salary and the benefits and everything, I don't know if we want to give one number, if we want to break it down by position, how you guys are prepared for that. It sounds like yours are coming from water receipts. What one of your positions are as well?
I mean, I
Is George still on?
George is on.
Both on, yeah.
So I would assume they're taking that one, but
Yeah.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Oh, yeah.
Good to know because of the confusion.
Yes.
I mean, we assumed one thing. Now now Mike's saying, you know, then then we were told it was half a year, but now Mike's saying one might be half, one may one may start right away in July, one may start in January. So, yeah, George, it'd be good if you could break down maybe
The whole year?
Yeah, like, yeah, for for just for in for each department too, just like, you know, if if Mike's is gonna be one and one, I don't know if Chief Grace's is is the same or or yours is Ja- July, or, you know, if you could just kind of give us the breakdown on when these positions start and what they're gonna cost.
But let's just look at it as the as the annual amount, regardless of when they're gonna start. I want to just look at it as the annual amount. So we can, yeah, I don't, yeah.
So we'll know what it'll be for 25?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, the concept of the exit rate is what what does the position cost year after year on an annual?
Yes, right.
I'm good with that.
So Marie, do you have that broken down?
Yeah, that information was in the handouts that I asked to be forwarded to you. There was a separate document on the the new positions. So basically
It's under Chief Kelleher's line item. I just want to talk through it because not everyone at home, you know, is it's new position breakout, I think, is the document.
Yep, so
Under fire, but it's for all, sorry, it's under fire, but it's for all the positions.
So for fire, if the two firefighters slash EMTs were to start on July 1st would be about $157,600. And that's strictly just salaries, stipends, uniforms, cleaning allowance. On the benefit side, it all depends on if they sign up for one of the town health insurance plans. That's something that we don't know. So as far as the benefits, you can't really predict what's gonna happen there until the person starts.
So let's assume they do, Marie.
As far as the the health insurance budget goes, we, when we budget, we don't budget for the exact number of staff that we have. That's just not a good practice. Throughout the year, you're gonna have changes, so people might come off, people might drop off. Someone on the individual plan might hop on a family plan. So we tend to leave a little bit, a little bit of a cushion there to accommodate those changes. And so, is there a question?
Yeah, so do we know how many of the current staff take the the insurance plan? Or or part of the insurance plan? Because they have the op- it's optional, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So do all of them do it? They just have the option and they all take it? Or they're
No, no, actually, there are several people that don't.
Okay.
What do you look for, maybe percentage?
Probably about 95.
Like, everyone does it, one person doesn't because their wife's, or their husband, whatever.
Yeah, so there are situations where one may also be, their spouse may be working in a public sector environment as well. They may have actually a little better plan in some regards or cheaper plan. So they may take that as opposed to taking this one.
Judge, Judge, do you have a metric for the average percentage of benefit cost per FTE? Because that's as close as you're gonna get to it.
Actually, if you take a quick look on the the last thing we just did with the building department, I think you'll see there were two individuals on there and above and beyond all others. The family plan HMO blue is the one that primarily is the is is it's the most that anybody takes, okay? That's the largest number that anyone takes is that particular plan. If you happen to look on there, I think there was a page and it showed that the town's portion of that was in or around $19,000.
Yes, $19,543. So let's say $20,000 per person just to
But then you have to add a pension as well.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but trying to get our arms around.
It's like a 35 to 40% right number beyond that. Marie, is that where this thing is as well? For in terms of the in terms of premium, that's what your question is, right? Dennis and my, yeah.
I mean, I'm used to, I'm used to 20, 25%.
Yeah, it's well, it's a pension though, it's the pension because that's a, that's what drives the number.
Kicks it up.
Yeah.
So math here is
That never sounds very close, that this right off of the pension plan, I think it's a 0.025 or something to that effect as they tell you per person to multiply it by.
And just to clarify, Marie, on the new positions breakdown for the columns on the right, I still see some that says like 1-on-7, 1 and 1-1. So are these the full, like, for the police, it will cost us 220, 920, all in, all year for those. Fire will cost us 157, 603, and then
That's if they both start July 1.
Yep.
For fire, we split it, so it's the number above that.
Yeah, but I want to just, I want to just look at it as a whole year instead of trying to split it.
So it would be the 157, and then below that are the ones for DPW and water and sewer. Those are both full years as well.
So we're looking at 220, 920 for police without benefits and pension, 157, 603 for fire, about 48 for DPW and about 57 for water sewer.
So what's a so markup of what did we say, 35%? I mean
About 35%, yeah.
For for pension benefits, so 35%.
Pension and healthcare.
Yeah, so 35% on 157 for the two. Fire brings us to 213, 213,000 for the two, so that's
So it's about 484. Let's just round numbers for salary. And then if you were to add 35% to that, we're looking at about 653.
653, yeah.
A year, all in.
And that's assuming, once again, that they all take the family, the most expensive health plan. And the money that we are requesting in the budget is just to cover their salaries. We're not asking for any additional money to cover benefits.
Right.
That's being supported with the existing money that we have.
Yeah, so I think what Marie was saying and what I understood from when I sat in on AdCom is like, you know, let's say there might be like a padding of 10 positions because some people leave, some people go through the year. So Marie and George feel that the benefits can be absorbed in the budget as it is now based on kind of the padding for people coming and going.
So that's fine.
That's correct.
The budget, but what what people want to know is what does it actually cost? Whether it's in the budget or not, and like 650 is about.
653, I think, is our number, yeah. Yeah, all in.
That's the reason why we stagger them, because we could actually, you know, be less of an impact on the budget from there.
Yep.
Yep. And, you know, where where I'm at on these, like, I'll I'll go first, I think, you know, with COVID, I almost see some of these positions as as really catch up for for the last few years. So I know hearing six is like, whoa, you hear six and you're like, wow, that that's a lot. But, you know, really, we were at 10. It probably could be even more than that. So it has been pared down. And I don't think any of these positions, based on what I've heard from these three gentlemen, like, none of these, to me, are like nice to have, like, no offense to the library, I'm gonna use the part-time library position. Like, it's not like, oh, we'd like to have, you know, another part-time library. And these are, you know, police and fire, public safety, roads, fixing, you know, the water billing, you know, these are all fixing, you know, the the water billing, you know, these are all, these are all keep, keep the the shop running type of jobs, and I think everyone has a really tough job, but police and fire, it it actually kind of concerns me, running at some of the staffing levels that you're running at for burnout, mental health, um, being able to have your head in the game and and do the job you want to do, and have a work environment that's conducive to, you know, being happy and healthy and and doing what you need to do. So, um, I think we all always want to be fiscally conservative, but it's hard to hear any of these, for me, and figure out, you know, where we want to shave these down based on some of the data that's in front of us. Um, and, you know, the one phone call I did get was actually in favor of the police positions. Um, so I think we've been talking about this for a number of weeks, and for me, I haven't heard a ton of feedback, uh, with people concerned if, like I said, if it was one call, but still it was one call eye-opening after the police, um, presentation the other day. So, um, any other comments on the positions? Because I feel like that's going to really be the biggest discussion in the bulk of us approving the budget, really, a lot of it comes down to these, these six positions, is kind of the meat of the discussion, so.
Right. You know, a lot of organizations, uh, and people maybe don't like me saying something like this, but there are key positions that are more important than other positions. People are more important than other people, but there are positions, and like in hospitals, my background, everybody understood the nurses get the lion's share, and nobody complained about it, and they still don't complain about it, and they're making good money, but, so I mean, that's how I look at police and fire. You you have revenue to offset, you know, your growth, um, I haven't seen anything to suggest these aren't positions that really are indicated at all, on the contrary.
No, and I guess, so, just to let everybody know, um, I had a nice, long conversation with Chief Grace, I called him the day after our last meeting, just to let him know that by no means did I not support what he was bringing forward. I, you know, I I told him, kind of got caught up, um, I just think, and and I'm not going to beat it, but we need to know the right information so we can pass it forward, because for me, that's, that's hard for us to just throw this number out there and then find out that's number is doubled or more, and so I I did explain to him that, um, kind of what, you know, Chief and Chris had brought tonight, if you show us the numbers, you know, I want to speak for myself, I want to speak for the board, but I think this board is is pretty open to how important your jobs are and your employees are to the town. It, um, I wanted, um, Chief Grace to know that, you know, if you thought I didn't support your positions, you couldn't be more wrong, you know, that's the conversation we had, he brought the data forward, and and I was, I was glad, and and because, you know, you get this, this feeling that if you question, you know, you know, he told me his job was to provide, um, the townspeople with safety, and and I, and then I said to him, and my job here is to provide the taxpayers that we've asked all the questions, so even though it seems like we're juggling back and forth a little bit, you know, by no means did I not hear what he was saying, and so that's why you had it easy tonight, Mike, because he got all the grief for last, for last week.
Well, once, him going first benefited him.
Yeah, exactly. I was thinking that tonight, I was almost like, if Mike went first, Mike would have, this Mike would have, would have got all, would have got all the grief, but, I mean, yeah, you know, and like I said, I'm not going to beat it, but we, you know, whether it's from Bill, new town manager, George Marie, you know, it can't be, you know, we ran the numbers and this is what they are, because those weren't the numbers, and, you know, now we're finding out that Mike would have liked one to start in July, one in January, you know, and so, yeah, if we know all the numbers, and and I think AdCom will probably say the same thing, because I've served there, too, you know, it's different people, but we kind of think the same way. If you show us the need is there, then we can back you up, at least with our recommendations, and of course, town meeting, they're going to do what they want to do, and even if I didn't support it, so, town meeting's going to vote yes, so, but it's just easier for we have it given to us the right way, and then we can get behind it, or not behind it.
But I do think it wasn't that we were given incorrect numbers, so I want to be fair there, I think there was a misinterpretation, because there was some confusion on mid-year, full year, so I don't want there to be this perception that we were intentionally given wrong numbers, because I don't feel that's the case at all. I think it's, it was, you know, even tonight, there's some confusion on, you know, January or or July, you know, what the hire date is, so I I truly believe that, you know, that was a misunderstanding, that we cleared up, I don't think-
Oh, yeah.
-that anyone came to us with wrong numbers, or intentionally gave us wrong numbers or misled us.
No, I'm, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus and say it was intentional, but it needs to be presented in the right way, because we were told this will affect the, but these are positions coming in, and this is, no one said it was going to be half year.
But we are beating it now, I think we should move on. Steph.
Okay, well-
Can I just say something real quick? Excuse me. Um, so I just wanted to clear something up, so in the budget books, um, I did put footnotes and comments that did specify that some of these positions were half-year, um, and when we did the, uh, the initial budget presentation, I know the number, I think it was like two-ninety K was brought up, that number didn't necessarily mean that that was just for these positions, that was simply the difference between the budget recommended that didn't have any new positions, and the one that does have the new positions. It was just simply the the difference between those two budgets. Um, but like I mentioned in the budget books, I did try to put footnotes in many different places to try to, you know, highlight the costs for these, um-
And that's kind of, that's what I heard, was, you know, the budget here, I'm going to hold it up, like, original one, and this, the difference was three-fifty, because that that was the difference, so I don't think that it was, that we were given wrong information, it's that, you know, that that truly is the difference between the two budgets, some of them are starting mid-year. I think we can move on on that, but.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to say it differently, but I'm, I'm not going to speak about it anymore. The paper that I read said six positions, three hundred thousand, I'm going to leave it at that. It didn't say how many months, when they were starting, I guess, the assumption from we're listening on budgets from advisory committee from here, was when you're telling me there are new positions, I assume they're going to start July first, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
And maybe we just saw it differently, but what I read was an assumption this, these were new positions for July first. So it didn't say, it didn't say either way, so, I'm going to leave it at that.
Could I just, um, ask Chief Grace to-
Come on up.
-jump on the mic to, to confirm something? So I I got some feedback from the community around the police positions, the the two, um, and so it's one patrol and one lieutenant, um, and, uh, the thought from the, that I heard was, they they liked the, they want to staff appropriately, they like the idea of boots on the ground, was the quote. Um, their idea about boots on the ground, or thought was, um, patrolman is really what that represents. Now, you presented a compelling case, um, at a, at a prior meeting around the the need for the addition, the lieutenant position, the third lieutenant position, and it had to do with, um, staffing the stadium, um, you know, command staff, uh, you know, Pa- Patriot Place, and then, um, conversion to the model for the accreditation commission and all of those things, so you made that case fairly compelling, um, in my opinion. And I just wanted to have that, um, bring that to the the committee and just have you sort of confirm that that's, that the the primary or the the most, um, what you're looking for is the lieutenant and the and the, and the patrolman, more so than two patrol or?
Yeah, there's a couple ways to answer that, but based on kind of the off of what's on the table, looking at the assessment of the staff currently-
I understand, yeah.
-um, the recommendation of the assessment of the agency, two is short, two is not, two is not fixing the problem.
Yes.
So I'm looking at, how do I survive-
Mm-hmm.
-and maintain what I have and deliver the services to the residents, which we are doing, at the same time not have a, a liability or a fault within the load work within the command staff with police reform mandates, accreditation, attainment, and maintaining that certification, and the workload based on all of the additional requirements up at Gillette, and also having at least one, one position, um, within the command division to possibly outsource, um, or have a, someone not have to work the entire summer on a regular basis for these, I believe were up to twenty-two major events before the soccer games and everything else.
Yep, okay, I just, thanks for confirming, I appreciate it.
I'm not like I'm trying to give people vacation time-
I understand.
-but when I tell them they have to work forty-two weekends a year, and that's the way it is, there's no room for growth, there's no room for what-if, heaven forbid someone has, can't work, and I can't cross-train that, that, the staff at that level, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mike, could you just add one more thing that I didn't even realize, but you said, just so maybe people at home also realize, um, that, um, because I think I was under the impression that we had, had put on some new officers, but then, um, you, um, you reminded me that it was because you had a, um, you needed to get guys on the desk, so it looked like you had, you you had lost positions in hydrogen, so it kind of, it kind of zeroed you out. You, you know, you remember we were talking about-
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, so-
Yeah, 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 just, because some people were like-
Well, as I mentioned-
Didn't we just hire some new officers? But then even you told, explained to me how that worked.
So as I mentioned, I think we all agree that the success Semerick has delivered, um, has far exceeded what we ever thought, um, was available in, um, emergency communications. But when the town opted to to take a, this chance, because not, not many communities wanted to go out on a limb and and be different and be proactive in emergency management, we had to do a risk assessment of what were we going to be left with. We had nine dispatch positions, so if we talk about actual employees, we eliminated nine. Now, if you break down healthcare costs, I guess that's, I don't know if we ever did that assessment. So we had nine dispatches, but it created a void within the agency, and for the public, that who was going to actually be the person who greets people when they walk in the door requesting police services, and we also shored up some of our high liability prisoner checks that were, I'll say, years ago weren't in compliance, or the best practices of fifteen-minute checks on a regular basis, and, uh, another list of additional duties. So that requires a body twenty-four-seven, which at a minimum is five police officers before they take their time off. Well, the, the town looked and assessed the, uh, the cost for Semerick, and evaluated and said, well, we can give you three. Well, essentially, we leveraged two more bodies out of the police department, um, that weren't, um, out on the road answering calls for service. So these two positions, in theory, are only bringing us back up to the, the amount of offices that we were, had on the street three years ago, they're not really new positions.
Which, for me, was key, you told me, like, I, I, you know, I remembered that you lost positions, but-
And I don't want to, I don't think we should lose sight that the delivery of public safety service through Semerick is just been so dynamic, and it's the model for the state, and out of all the communities in the Commonwealth, we have probably reaped the biggest benefit, especially with, uh, emergency response plans, um, with Gillette and Town, so, that's-
Would you suggest there's the ability to leverage that more as we move forward, um, sort of that, our regional model? Additional opportunities there?
In regards to what?
Um, ju- public safety, whether that be communications or, um-
And what they can deliver to the, um, police and fire and the other four communities?
Mm-hmm.
I could let Rob, and I can let the fire chief speak on that, but they're, they're so dynamic in what they can offer us, whether it be potentially technology advancements, and maybe offloading some of those that are now burdening the school department on a regular basis, because that's their scope, that's their, you know, circle, that's what they work in, and that's what we work in.
All right, I don't want us to get off, off-topic, but I just, I just, yeah.
Yeah, so there is potential there.
In short, Seth, we're, we're looking at the next generation right now, if you speak.
Great.
Well, through the chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, for me, these, these last couple of, um, meetings with, with all three of you, sort of, was a little bit of eye-opening, um, and not to bump you off to the side, Chris, sorry, but the stress of, and no less stress-
That's fine, I'll go. I'm watching the snow out the window.
I was going to say, I said snowing outside, and you're wondering-
I'm getting antsy.
I'm only going to put the plow down. Um, you know, the stress public safety, um, um, has over these last couple of years, and I reme- uh, and I said this once before, when we were all very excited to hear that, um, you know, there's, you know, five or six or ten more concerts going on, and I looked straight at, uh, Chief Kelleher, and all I saw him do was roll his eyes, and we're all excited, and and you guys are all saying, you got to be freaking kidding me. Um, so not only am I in favor of these six, I'd like to put out there, and I might be way off-base, love to see you guys come back next year for the other two, see where we're at, make the presentation to the new town manager, and, uh-
Mine may still be in the academy next year.
But, but that was actually part of the strategy, was to come back with additional people, because we, we couldn't buy off all of that at the same time, it was just too much of a, of a bite, and then, but I think that the idea was to come back and, and look at it again, but, you know, with a better understanding of where we are financially, to see if we can actually, in fact, do that. So, because the need has been identified, I don't think there's any question about that.
No, but with that said, I'm sure you guys are already doing this, but, you know, just looking at wherever you can be doing the saves, wherever you can be doing the grants, you know, just kind of keep doing that stuff, because it is really important, I think, on the offset, and for us to be successful long-term as well. Any other comments or questions on these positions? Then we're going to kind of go into free cash, go into the final recommendations, and then-
Capital.
And then the capital. Sorry, okay, so the, so we're going to talk about free cash, sorry, then vote on the budget, and then we're going to talk about CIP. So why don't we hit the free cash discussion real quick? Um, up to you guys, if you want to stay, I think Chris is going to go, I'll be plowing in a collared shirt.
We'll see, we'll see what's going on there.
All right.
I'll be on Zoom with her.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, thanks, guys.
Well, I think we're going to stay, we're just going to sit in the back.
Okay, that's cool, yeah. All right, so, free cash discussion, so let's move into that agenda item. If everyone's, it looks like everyone's good on the, I didn't see any more hands or questions, okay. All right, so I think we're good to move on to the free cash.
So I think Marie's going to, going to take the lead in this one. So go ahead, Marie.
So, um, as far as the, the free cash goes, um, so, um, the calculation itself, um, has a lot, um, that's part of it, uh, you essentially have your undesignated fund balance, which is, it's just your general fund balance, there's lots of, of in-and-outs, um, that go into that fund, um, and basically, what we've been trying to do, uh, the last, I guess, three budget cycles is, leave, at the end of everything, so, once you have your certified free cash, and then you take away what's used for the operating budget, for anything that's capital, and, um, or any other items, such as the OPEB catch-up payments, uh, what we've been trying to do the last three years is leaving about a million and a half at the end of the year, so then for the next, um, free cash certification, you start off with that one-point-five million, and that ensures that you have at least enough, say if we were to have another COVID or another pandemic, that gives you a good starting point, so you're still able to support your operating budget, which I've said in the past, the eight-hundred thousand that we're proposing to use for free cash from free cash for the next year's budget is directly tied to the debt service for the Burrell School project. Um, so, uh, like I said, you know, it's not good, it's not a good practice to deplete your free cash, that's never a good thing. I think we have a good conservative approach, um, you know, by leaving that million and a half each year, and, um, something that has helped our free cash position in the la- at least in the last two years, has been all of the COVID grants that we've received. Um, last year, too, we received several holiday premiums, um, or pre- premium holidays from our health insurance, so while there were a lot of budget turnbacks, um, a lot of that, you know, were one-time, um, you know, occurrences, um, but I think overall, for the next fiscal year, so, or for the current fiscal year, actually, um, we're looking, we're tracking the revenues, revenues are doing really well. Overall, general fund, we're about three million and a half above where we were at this point last year. Um, so we're expecting a, a, another good free cash position at the end of this year, and as I've mentioned in other meetings, um, it's obviously not a good practice to use free cash towards the operating budget, but we're forced to do it, um, unless somehow we experience some crazy new growth or a brand-new revenue source, um, but the plan- But the plan is, and that will continue to be the plan, is to lean off of using free cash. So last year, we used a million, for fiscal year '24, we're proposing 800,000. If the revenues keep doing well, we're looking to drop that even more by the time town meeting comes. And then future years, obviously, we'll keep dropping that number as the revenues allow. Was there anything you wanted to add, George?
Yeah, about the, the only thing that just, I'll just circle back around on what you were saying about the free cash being used in the budget. And again, I'll go back to what I said before, my, my hat's off to the town. You guys managed to do a bond issuance within the existing framework of the budget that you already had, all right? Most places, most towns would have gone out and done a debt exclusion override to cover the amounts of the, of the bond issuance that you were doing on that. You did it from within, and that's fine, and in fact, I find it quite impressive. The only issue that, that you have with it is that you have to find a revenue source to do it. And when that came through, we, we obviously needed money at the time, and then at the same time, the COVID kicked in, so you had all, what you would, a lot of people would call the perfect storm. And it's, it's, it's good that we kind of came out of it on two feet.
All right, any, I heard some of this at AdCom last, last week, and I don't know, I know Seth, you had a separate meeting. Are there any other questions on this item?
I guess, so, so where, where do we, where do we go from, like, the million five to, to we're gonna, we're gonna end at the, the five, the 5 million number? Is that, then once, like, the monies come in, so that's where we'll look to be in October, when we certify the free cash?
So the, so the 5.2 is what, what was certified last fall, so that's your starting point. Then you take out the 800 that we're proposing to use for the next year's budget. The 1.3 million for the next year's CIP budget. Then there's 337K that was used, or voted at the January special town meeting towards capital. There was the final catch-up payment, payment for OPEB, 200,000 transferred to the stabilization fund, and then a 50,000 transferred to the fire stabilization fund. And that, so our, like I mentioned, our free cash went from 5.2, and right now, we have a million 506 left. So that will be our starting point for, so once we close the current fiscal year, the 1.5 will be our starting point. And then the result of this year's activity, so any budget turnbacks. If we collect, one of the, the revenue sources that goes into free cash, say if, say if you had a really old tax title account that were to be paid off, that's money that goes to free cash. If you're collecting old prior year motor vehicle bills, if you sell a piece of land, a piece of property, it all depends, every fiscal year is different. So it all depends on how well your collections are for that year, if you're collecting on prior year outstanding bills, budget turnbacks. And then assuming you have no rent deficits. I mean, at this point, we're expecting, so essentially, the policy says that we're targeting a recharge of 2 million. And essentially, what that means is, so you're starting with the 1.5, you're targeting the 2 million recharge. So realistically, for the current fiscal year that we're in, we're expecting at least 3.5 million of free cash. And the other thing I wanted to mention, too, this might be a discussion for another time. So our, our financial policies, we do have one that says that we target an undesignated fund balance of 10% to 15%. That number is, just in my opinion, is, it's way too high. What the Department of Revenue recommends is to have a free cash policy that says that you will target a free cash of anywhere between 3% to 5% of your operating budget. That's sort of the best practice that a lot of municipalities use. I think that's something we should explore, obviously, that's a bigger, bigger discussion, but just something I wanted to note, since we're talking about free cash.
But using that, that piece, you're, you're already at around 6% right now.
So, so one, one important thing to remember is that we made our final catch-up payment on, on the OPEB this year, which was a million dollars. So we won't have that for next fiscal year, because the million dollars for this current fiscal, for the next fiscal year is already baked into the budget. So there won't be any, any further hit on that. So, so you're really theoretically, you're starting off the next year with a million, a million dollars further, in a better position than you were just the previous year.
Yes, that's true.
Yes, so going forward, from free cash, we should only see the operating budget, our operating budget, and then anything that's capital. And unless, I mean, if an emergency comes up or something like that, but we should, we don't see, we don't anticipate any huge hits to free cash in the next coming years.
Actually, the, the spending, the budget spending, as well as the revenue situation are both in a very good place right now.
Yes.
Hey, one, one, one quick thing, I don't know if anybody else heard it this weekend. I know, I think I had said it at AdCom, just about us, you know, not, not putting the cart before the horse with the, the concerts. Bruce Springsteen canceled two concerts because of illness, so that's kind of what I mean.
Here?
Not here.
Oh, okay.
This past weekend, so, you know, you know, big concerts, you know, big, big-name people that are going from city to city to city. That isn't just a, oh, well, we'll just reschedule it, and we'll come next week instead. So just, just a heads up, you know what I mean, that I, I know we're all excited about this concert season, but all it would take is somebody to, you know, to get sick, or, you know. It didn't, it didn't say, just said because of illness, didn't, I'm not assuming that he's.
Yeah, he's not sick.
That he's very sick and he's not coming to Gillette, but.
He's not sick.
He's not sick, because one of his band members is sick.
Oh, okay, okay, but either way, he canceled two concerts.
So just so you know, Stephanie, we don't anticipate that as a number going into next year. And what we anticipate is that the activity level is high, which means that we have a, we have a confidence level that's high because of the fact we go into that. But we don't go to a specific number until the, the year starts, and then we actually see the final number come in.
Myself, I like to count what we've actually got in the coffers.
Right.
And as Marie mentioned only a little while ago, right now, we're running 3.5 million ahead of where we were last year. That's the, the number I'm working on, I don't like speculating out into the future.
All right, any other comments or questions on the free cash discussion or the positions that we've heard before we move into making our final recommendation on the budget? All right, so moving over to the budget, are there any other areas that we have not talked about this evening that the board wants to talk about before we move forward with discussing the budget as recommended with the six positions? Are there any other comments or questions anywhere else in the budget that anyone would like to address? No? No? Okay. All right, so with that, do we feel, we feel we're ready to take a bu, take, take a vote? Anyone want to discuss any of the, the six positions before we move forward with voting on the recommended budget further? No? Okay.
So this is the budget that goes to the advisory committee?
Right.
Yeah, and that's the one they've been using, they've been using all along, but their plan is to vote not tomorrow, but the next one. But we wanted to have a little bit of time in case anything needed to be worked out. So they've been following this budget all along, but we're then making our recommendation for this.
So meaning, this is the budget that, this is the, the one, this is the official budget?
Right, exactly.
This is the one that will go for the town meeting if, if they, if they agree with us. Got it.
All right, so it sounds like there's no other questions, so I think we can move forward with the first motion, and then I've under, oh, sorry.
I just want to make sure that we're reading off the, the correct one, so it's the, it was in the files that was sent to you all. So it's bottom line, it's the 93,504,890. So it would have been one of the separate handouts. So we, we adjusted for the final number from the health insurance. So that was the only change from the, the bound book that you all have in the handouts that went out.
So it's nine, Marie, it's 93.5 million?
Yes.
Okay, 3.39%.
3.39, yep. And this is the budget that's balanced with existing revenues. And it includes the six positions.
There's only one number that we don't have for, we, we actually have two numbers that we don't have final numbers on yet. Well, that was a Southeastern Mass number, right, is that correct, Marie?
Yes, and the, yeah, they told us, I spoke with their finance person there, and they said to keep that budget flat. They don't have their assessment amount available yet, but they anticipate that it will be less than that, because the enrollment is down.
And then the second number is that the property and liability coverage, we have not received the final number on that yet, but we did carry a, a little bit of an increase of, I think, 1.5% in the budget for that.
Yep.
Okay, so, and, and what did we decide on about the positions? Like, which, which budget number is gonna go forward, is it gonna be?
That's the one that includes, that's, they're in that budget.
No, no, but is it, is it, is it gonna be one in January, one in July, what, what is?
That's, that's how we proposed it in the budget.
For, for everybody? Or, would, would, when a Chris is stat, Chris is gonna be a July 1st, both of his gun, gonna be a July 1st stat?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and both, both police and fire are gonna do one and one, or?
So it's, the way we have it in the budget is, so police, both are starting July 1, because of their needs, and the patrolman would have to go to the police academy. Their lieutenant, actually, their busy time is in the summertime, I know with the concerts and all of that. So we have both for police start in July 1, fire is the one that's one July 1, the other one on January 1. And then the two for Chris, they're both starting July 1.
Okay, all right, so five is starting July 1, and then one more will come in in January. And, and that's how, that's how it's all already reflected, Marie, in, in the numbers in that budget? Okay.
Yes, I made the adjustments, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And it's, I was gonna say, just, it's 93,504,890.
Right, just a, a comment that the reduction in debt service principle really helped go from almost 4% to 3.39%. So that's a, that was a good adjustment.
All right, yeah, and I think, you know, unfortunately, this is a little bit of a COVID catch-up with, with some really important positions, but, you know, we'll have to have a keen eye next year and look at, you know, keep our eye on the ball and keep a real watch on expenses and. So I think with that, we're ready for a motion.
Let me get back to my motion page. Motion to approve the FY '24 budget as recommended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. All right, great discussion, thank you for coming out in the snow, but you got your position, so.
I want, I want to thank the chiefs and Chris, and particularly Marie and George for doing a terrific job of putting this document together. A lot of work was into this, as you know, and a lot of detail, and this is a document that we intend to submit for the, for GFOA National Award this year, so. Marie's, Marie's been tracking this very closely, so let's, one close, one step closer, so thank you for that.
I'll just add that, I mean, we did ask for a compelling case for incremental headcount, and I think that, that was a lot of good work and teamwork that went into that across finance and, and the department heads and, and your office, Bill, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
And also, one thing I'll take from my conversation with Chief Grace is, we, you know, it's easy, was, and I admitted it to you, didn't I, that, I always will admit when I'm wrong. I said, you know, it was, it's easy for us to say a, a budget number and no new positions, and then, like Seth just said, you were very compelling, and you did, you changed my mind from what we had done. So maybe that isn't always best practice, just to say no new positions until we actually hear what the positions are.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you do.
All right, great, so we had the motion, I'm sorry, we had the motion, we had some comments, any other discussion? All right, we had, we had our vote, real good, okay. All right, so next, we're on to CIP requests, and that does need a vote as well. Bill, are you taking that one?
Yeah, I'll take that one, so the, the committee has met a couple times. We met the first day in, the first Saturday in, in March, as we always do, to have our hearings with all the, the different departments to explain their needs. And then we took a couple days to actually go through the requests and, and be sure that we had a financing plan to address these that made sense. We couldn't address them all, so we deferred a number of things off to, I don't know, but, you know, good, a good number of things that we had to take off, because we couldn't make it all fit. But you may see some of those things reappear at the, at the Fall Town Meeting, after we have a better handle on our free cash position, our new free cash position at that point. So if you, you take a look at the list, it's a pretty comprehensive list, including finance department, the assessors. What we have to do, we're required by law to do a full certification every five years, that's $120,000 expense. Information Services was $200,000. The list, if you want, I'll go through, do you want me to go through the list, or just for the sake of, of everyone, or?
I don't think we need to look through the list, given that CIP was televised personally.
Fair enough, okay, so.
I mean, everyone okay with that?
So we, so we actually have a total CIP request of 5,537,981 that was recommended by the, by the committee. The financing plan is ambulance fund 602,137, chapter 90 with 640,000. TNC, which is a, this is, is a, is another form of, of state aid, if you will, that comes from Uber, Ubers and Lyft type of exchanges. Water, water and sewer, actually, water is 2, 2,55,000, sewer is 30,000, free cash is 1.3 million, as was talked about earlier. Bonding is 750,000, and operating is 107,000, for a total of 5,537,981. I just want to take it as a footnote, though, that we had quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting with the committee relative to the issue of sidewalks, because we did have a separate discussion with the two individuals who proposed articles at town meeting that were proposed as, as, as individual articles to address that particular issue, and where we fell on it is that there was no disagreement over the fact that the need was there. The question then came down to how do we pay for it? And, and so we, we kicked it around quite a bit, because there really is not a lot of options for us to do that. And what we landed was that we would like to do, come back at some point, and obviously it won't be me, but it'll be something I'll discuss with John when, when he gets here, is the possibility of us doing a debt exclusion, a $10 million debt exclusion, to do bonding over, over several, over 10 years, to pay for a, a plan to do sidewalks. That was really the only viable option we have, other than the fact we get a big slug of, of state aid or, or federal aid, or whatever the case may be, that would offset that cost. But it's something that, over time, if you look at it from the perspective of what it would cost, it's, it's really not a huge hit at this time. But though it is, there is a challenge with respect to right now, interest rates are a little bit higher than they normally are. But because we have a AAA bond rating, our rate, our borrowing rate was actually significantly lower. So it would be significantly lower if we did that. So the cost to, to the residents would have to be a consideration. Obviously, a debt exclusion would require a vote from the town meeting, support from the board, as well as putting that before the electorate for consideration, to see if folks wanted to do that. But right now, we, we do have some money set aside for, in the, in our road program to do some sidewalk work this year. The, the issue is really taking care of existing sidewalks as well, as well as closing the network of sidewalks that we really do need to have in the community and needs to be addressed. It's been a long time, since this has really been addressed, and, and the need is definitely there to do this. So there may be another way that we haven't looked at it yet, but, and I think this will be a question that John will have to address when he gets here, but I think we did take, have a good fruitful discussion about it, and, and took a lot of good information about it, and the committee was pretty satisfied with the way we, we landed on this, but. And I think the, the two proponents of the articles were, actually, one was a former AdCom member, and the other was a current AdCom member, who proposed the articles, who believed that this is something we really do need to do, and Dennis, I don't know if you have anything further you want to add to that, but.
No, I, I'm the select board representative, and I think it's a great process, great meetings, a lot of work went into it, and I think everyone kind of came together with what's before everyone tonight.
So is this where that 1.3 number comes in?
No, the 1.3, the 1.3 million is, is to support the, the free cash for the article, for the capital program in total.
Okay.
Okay, so Marie, you had something?
That's what I mean, after.
It's a funding summary on page two, go down.
After, after, okay.
Go down one page. Go down one page and you'll see it.
Second page, yeah, you'll see it.
I just wanted to add, so we, we reached out to our financial advisors over at Hilltop Securities, and they said that, so right now, interest rates are anywhere between four and six. Because we do have the AAA credit rating, we could get a rate as low as between 3 and 3.5%. So say if you were to do a, a 10 million bond issuance, paid over 20 years, that would get you 10 years' worth of roads and sidewalks projects. And if you take the, so the average single-family assessed value, based on the current year's tax rate is $552,000. If you were to look, calculate out the, the tax bill impact to the average single-family home, you're looking at an increase of about $121 for one year, if, for a $10 million bond issuance. So just to give you guys some numbers on that.
Be $121 per year.
Yes.
Or $30 a quarter, if you will. So that's the, that's where we landed. I think it's going to require more discussion before we get to that point and before our recommendation is finalized, but it'll have to occur after this meeting. We, we thought, we kind of played the prospect of doing this as maybe a special within the annual, but I think to do this right, it does require a little more discussion and a little more vetting of the, of the issues and make sure we have maybe a bigger audience to discuss it, so that every, so that folks really understand the need and where we're coming from in this.
Well, plus, what are we, what are we looking at for OPEB 32?
No, OPEB is, OPEB is actually in the budget, so.
No, no, I mean.
When will it be retired?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's a good point, Stephanie, thank you for raising. So the, the pension as well as the OPEB, the OPEB will probably be a couple years, maybe like three years, 2033, but I think the, the pension can be retired in 2030. So those two major numbers will require significant opportunity to do bonding into the future without impacting the, the residents any further. So I, I think that's something to think about, and something that, it's sort of a legacy thing I think you should all think about as I, as I, as I leave here, is to think about what you're going to do with that, with that revenue source. Start planning for it now, because it's, you know, think about that, that's really only six, seven years away. And so you should be.
When we say roads, would that also include sidewalks?
It would, it would be roads, sidewalks, and, and, but, but the majority of it, though, the plan was really to use the majority of it for sidewalks, although there is some road things that need to be done. And we currently use money for side, for roads now. We put money aside into, into, into the program for that. But I think the point is, is that you're going to have a bigger opportunity to deal some things, so you really should be having really fruitful discussions now, and I think, Dennis, you've probably done this before in your, in your capital planning days, but with, with, with the hospital, but, but you really need to look at things like, such as, you know, what are your capital needs going to be over the next 10 to 20 years? And, you know, and that should be figuring into, into the financing plan of what you'll have for available funds to help off some of that debt service. So now's the time to have some strategic discussion within the community and, and really sort of line those things up for the next, next few years. So the, the recommendation is, is to fund the, as I described, the, the funding sources, the $5,537,981 as a capital plan for fiscal year '24. If there's any further questions, I'm happy to take them.
No, I think, I think we're ready for a motion? Okay. Thank you for serving on that committee as well, Dennis.
Ready for the motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the FY '24 Capital Improvement Planning Committee request as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. So that takes us to Town Manager's update. Since it's getting late, Bill, I'll ask you to kind of focus or get through the other items quickly with the, the focus on the billboard piece.
Sure.
That's the new one that, there is a draft in the packet for everyone as well.
So before you tonight is, is the, is the latest billboard, negotiated settlement for, for Impact, an Impact grant. I believe Bob Burr is on the line as well. Bob was the person who negotiated this with me. Hey, Bob, good evening.
Thank you.
So we, we actually went through this, we spent a couple days going through this because, and Bob has, has both professional as well as practical experience dealing with billboard agreements, where he served as, as a, as a selectman, select board member in Canton. And the agreements that, that Canton have are actually some of the best that I know of. So I have to give Bob credit for having been serving in that role, that he gave, he brought us back a decent agreement here. So this is a unique agreement in the sense that we, if you take a look at the billboards on Route 1, the average, the, the typical cost is like $12,500 for each side. But for, because it's a Route 95 billboard, the cost is actually $25,000 per side. So this will be a two-sided billboard. And the one thing that Bob added in as well is that if there were revenues, if there are ad, if there are ad revenues that exceed $500,000 in a single year, that we would pick up an additional 5% of those revenues over and above that, which is something I've not seen until this one, so I, I have to give him credit for that. So this is a, a new provision which does provide some growth in revenues well beyond the, the straight $50,000 per year. This is a 20-year agreement, so this is $1 million over, over that period of time, plus whatever advertising revenues above, above and beyond the 500,000. He also included six hours per month on each side, so a total of 12 hours for, for community advertising. So we can, we can also use that as, as the town needs it throughout the course of the year. But again, it's 12 hours per month, which is, again, further, more than, than what we've received on the other boards on Route 1. So this is a bigger board, actually a bigger audience, if you will, but yet we also had a growth in revenue to show that as well.
Is it possible to see that Canton agreement? So that's the one thing that I feel like I've been flying blind, is like I'm big on comps and data, and we haven't really seen any comps, you know, so besides people telling us, you know, this is, this is what's normal, I, I have yet to kind of see that, that proof that that's kind of what's normal. One of the concerns for me, obviously, was I don't think any of us want to enter an agreement for 20 years and be locked into that without any growth. So I was, I did find it favorable that, you know, if revenue does grow, which we assume that it will over 20 years, there is that growth that we can get there on, on the rep, we would get a piece of the revenue from the board. So for me, that, that ticked the box a little bit on growth, I mean, I, I'm not sure why there's no escalation clause in it, like that's the piece that I get hung up on, $50,000 for 20 years with no escalation. You know, besides people telling me that's it, I have, I don't have anything to show that other towns are signing these agreements as such, without any kind of escalation clause.
I think we had a similar conversation both.
We did, yeah, but now the highway ones, I think, are even, and we do know that Sharon has them and Canton has them and some other towns do have them. So I wasn't comfortable just signing this without talking to the board, that's why it's here. It, it probably wouldn't be executed this evening? Was that our intent to execute this evening, where?
Well, the, the intent was to bring it back to the board, actually, the Town Manager actually signs this agreement.
Okay, okay.
But I just wanted to have the review with the board before you, before I did that, so, and to see if there was any questions beyond that. But I don't know, Bob, can you address that?
Yeah, sure, I will add that Mr. Keegan and I did sit down, he's a very astute negotiator on behalf of the Town of Foxborough with a great number of years of experience. He certainly dealt with billboard issues in Dedham back in the early part of my career on the Select Board in Canton. And part of the process or his due diligence was to actually take a look at the Canton agreements, which are part of his file.
So you do have that? Okay.
And this, 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 this grant agreement mirrored competitive agreements where they're actually at today. We looked at this, we looked at the Town of Norwood's billboard agreements on Route 1, which is really not a fair comparison because I-95 is a better comparison, but we certainly discussed the surrounding communities around Foxborough. But most important, to address the chair's concern that the, that Mr. Keegan does in fact have the Canton agreement as part of the file.
The only question I.
By the way, I want to thank you all for allowing me to join you by Zoom tonight in this inclement weather. I appreciate that.
We may, may not be able to get home tonight, but that's all right.
Just a, a quick, you don't have to answer this tonight either. The only thing I noticed, and maybe is a customary, in, in your opinion, doesn't appear to be any out clauses for the town, if for whatever reason this isn't working and we really want to exit the agreement. Is there any mechanism where that could be addressed, or is it typical that that is not in these agreements?
I would, I would say that in any one of these types of agreements, given, in the one instance, the 20 years is a positive, but it's also a negative, not only for the town, but it's also a negative for the commercial entity as well, too. It needs to work for everybody. I think one of the creative things that we've added in this agreement comparatively to, say, an escalation clause, is the, essentially a 5% royalty on any revenue over $500,000. $500,000 may seem like a lot of money today, but 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, or 20 years from now, right off of the top even before expenses, that's a pretty rich stipulation, in my opinion, or I should say provision.
Do we need to renegotiate after 20 years, or is it, is it over?
Well, at that point, the, the deal ends, and then we can actually, we, we could renegotiate at that point. I, I'm assuming, Bob, I, I've not seen the tw, at the end of a 20-year agreement yet, so I couldn't tell you, but, but I'm assuming that's the case, right?
Yeah, certainly, because the lease would end at that time, so it'd be a negotiation not only with the landowner, but also with the Town of Foxborough as well, too. I mean, we do have provisions in here to make sure that the advertisement is done in a tasteful way, and as Mr. Keegan stated, it is $1 million over a 20-year period of time.
It's, it's interesting, too, because we don't know what's going to happen in 20 years. It could be a whole different kind of advertising. That's, that's, I mean, it could be holograms, for all we know, right? It could be a whole different technology that we're, that we're dealing with, so, but at that point, we'll have to deal with it and then see how it plays out, but this at least provides us a guarantee of revenue during that period of time.
Will you help? Is there anyone that can?
I'd also, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to know if Foxborough and the, the Route 1 agreements mirror this type of a pattern as well, too? Meaning long-term?
Long-term.
With a fixed rate?
There just, there just aren't that many deviations from that model, unfortunately, in one way or the other. Fortunately or unfortunately, it just, it's not, not that we're trying to change the world, so to speak, but I think this was, the thing, the, the key thing for me was that, was the, the language regarding the additional revenue over and above the, the fixed amount.
And what would you estimate the revenue of a sign? I know we won't hold you to it, but.
Yeah, well, they do, they do vary. With competition, that number could go up, or with compet, I should say, with a lot of competition, that number could go down. It's really hard to determine, but in fairness, I think it should produce around that number, so I wouldn't imagine bonuses per se in the first year, especially with a rollout. From my experience, it takes time for the sign to gain national advertisers, say, such as Dunkin' Brands, to participate on that sign, but after a year's period of time, it could change. I mean, we're in an inflationary environment today, all the costs of everything is going up, so, you know, if I had to estimate, I would say $500,000 is commercially reasonable for, for the billboard operator. Going, you know, you can always negotiate an agreement where it's so rich to the town that it's not practicable from a commercial standpoint.
Right. And if we want to put any messages up, which we have done that on Route 1, is there, like, design support with this as well? You haven't needed it, you've just done them?
Yeah.
Okay, well, good, we've got Christina to do that, but let's say we didn't have her. Is there design support that would help us? Like if we said, hey, we need a silver alert done, are we on the hook to come up with that billboard, or is there any, anyone to help us if we didn't have a Christina here?
Well, I think Christina is certainly super talented. I think that the technology exists, however, that's a little bit outside of the scope of my expertise, but I will tell you that in the Town of Canton, for example, or other towns that I've represented, there's never been an issue with the town being able to put up fairly quickly additional ads such as, you know, congratulations to the Foxborough hockey team or the basketball team on winning a championship, or any type of amber alert, certainly, or any other type of public messaging. It's able to get up onto the board fairly quickly. In this world we live in today, where it's digitized, it's a same-day turnaround. I've never run into an instance where a town's been precluded. I, I do think that that is actually a great provision in here. We talked in terms of, in the other agreements, if you look at Canton's, it basically says we'll provide advertisement based on available space. And Bill, but when we were presenting this to the town prior to Town Meeting, we talked in terms of eight hours total, and Bill negotiated hard to get six hours per side, 12 hours total per month, which I think that has great value. And I remember listening in some of the public meetings that there was an interest in Foxborough doing more advertising on these boards as a public service message.
Okay. So Robert, I have a question. I was just trying to think of how to, how to word it, because it's absolutely not my or anybody's business, you know, what type of agreement the rounds have. Is, is a typical owner of the property, do they enter into a similar agreement that doesn't escalate? I'm not asking you for numbers or anything, I'm just, like, do they go into it something typical?
It's a, it's a fair question. I'll just talk generally with the risk, I, I certainly wouldn't want to compromise the rounds negotiation, but generally speaking, they negotiate at least for a 20-year period of time for a rental amount, and generally, they do have increases. They're not necessarily tied to the performance of the board, but I have seen those instances as well, too, but then you end up with a lower base rent amount. But it follows the same type of a structure. I think Mr. Keegan's point, that these are not complicated contracts. Pretty much follow a particular path. But there's a lot of investment that goes into this. This board, for example, probably costs close to $700,000 to put up. That revenue needs to be recouped over a period of time. Rent needs to be paid, and the grant needs to be paid to the town as well, too, so there's only really so much money in the pie. One thing that this agreement also has, which Canton has as well, too, is that it would be bonded to ensure performance by the billboard operator, and then also, we, Bill negotiated this to make sure that the town received an annual report. And it's not something the town has to request, in the Section 3, it says it shall provide the town an annual report, so you'll always be able to see exactly what the revenue is that the board did per year.
Yeah, that was my concern when they, I'll say, so what, what is the actual number? So we didn't, it wasn't just a pull out of thin air, you know, so it's, show us the revenue as to what you actually made.
Yeah, and, you know, a million dollars is a lot, but spread out over 20 years, it dilutes it, so I think we're just making sure that, you know, we have the escalation as appropriate, so. I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied if Bill has reviewed Canton's documents, that, you know, this, this new piece is getting a piece of the earnings above and beyond the 500,000. So just didn't want to give Bill the direction without you guys seeing it and giving us the opportunity to talk about it.
All right, thank you.
All right, great. So I'll, I'll ask you to keep it, you know, brief, real, if there's anything key for the.
Listen, I, I'm fine with being brief, it's okay, so, so thank you, Bob, I think, appreciate, thanks for jumping in tonight, too.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You as well.
Thank you for hanging on till the end.
So, so we have, we have a new, we have a new Assistant Treasure Collector that, that started this week, Barbara Donahue, who started on Monday, so welcome to, welcome to Barbara. She, who comes from Middle, Middleboro, Middle, Middletown.
Middleboro.
Middleboro, so, I was getting those two fixed, those two confused. So she's from Middleboro. She is, she comes with a lot of experience, so I, we're really glad that she was able to join us. We have advertisements out for Tree and Park positions right now. We, we have the Finance Director position advertised as well, and lifeguards, we're looking for lifeguards for the, for the, for the summer recreation program. So those are, that's the total of the, of the, of the positions that we're looking for as we speak. And with that, I think I'll just, I'll keep it at that, because I know you got a few other items that you want to do, and I'll just, I'll limit my conversation for that for now.
All right, great. So I'm going to kind of skip over some of the old business and new business, as far as dates, like I'm sure everyone's seen the Sharps Collection and the Rabies Clinic that's coming up in the Hazardous Waste Day, and kind of focus the attention to the summer Select Board schedule. So the reason why we're talking about this early is there is a request for the room because Mark wants to get back his citizenship. Citizens Academy, which would, which we would use this room on Tuesday nights to run that. So looking at last year, we definitely did one meeting in August. And Christina, we had talked about doing that again. And then July, we're actually due to have three meetings the way Tuesdays fall. One, nope, two. And then, sorry, it was August that we were due to have three meetings. So we were thinking if we did the August 15th, kind of in the middle of August. And then our July meeting, one falls on July 4th. So we would have July 18th as our meeting, and then we would have August 15th as our meeting in the summer. They could be slightly longer. And again, those are meetings that we already would have had scheduled. If anything, it's, you know, removing the July 4th meeting and then condensing the August down to one meeting, which we did last year as well. So that would give us July 18th and August 15th. And that would allow Christina to update the website so that any applicants for licenses or agenda items that have to get onto our agenda could plan accordingly. So are there any concerns with us moving forward with that schedule for the summer?
No. So June, June's going to stay as is?
Yep, we were just talking July.
Yeah.
So July would go to, would meet July 18th, since the 4th is a holiday.
Mm-hmm.
And then we picked the one in the middle of the August, the August 15th, we would keep.
Okay.
Great plan.
And if we have to add something in?
We can always add it in if anything comes up.
But we're going to do
But at least we'll move forward with planning for that. Yeah, one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
Exactly. Yep. And, you know, they may go a little longer because we're going to have one, but I think that worked pretty well last year.
And then we'll, sometime in August, then we'll deal with when we're going to start up for the fall.
No, we're all
I'll have that scheduled for you at the, at the May meeting.
Okay, yeah.
We'll go through June.
We'll go through June, okay.
And then usually at the, at the, the May reorg meeting after elections and everything, or at the following when we
But I think we'll just continue with every other Tuesday. We'll probably just have to talk about if there's anything that falls on a holiday or, you know, anything like that. So
Well, I guess probably if we just decide what, what September date we're going to, we're going to start, then the rest would just go every other, right? Up until, up until the holiday season?
It would take us to September 12th and September 26th, if we keep with our case.
So, so, yeah. So you think, you think we would, would we start, we're going to go the 15th would be one, two, would we, would we go back on the 5th?
Nope, the 12th.
The 12th.
Because school committee does every other, so
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Just keeping with every other, it would take us to the 12th and 26th of September.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
And then for June, just to recap, that'll be June 6th and June 20th.
The usual.
Yep, the usual. Okay. All right. So any other selectmen's update, items to discuss under this before we move on to the action items?
I got two, two quick things.
Oh, and Seth has his hand up.
Good and bad. Oh, Seth, you want to go first?
I'm wondering.
I know, usually I'm the only one blabbering.
I'm wondering if it's, we have to say. So I just wanted to say, last night, great win for the Foxborough Lady Warriors basketball team. They, they had really been sort of coasting up until last night with fairly easy wins. So they were tested last night, and they responded with a really gutsy, just hard-fought win against this, a really good wall pole team. So
Number one seed, I believe.
Number one seed. And now, so they're playing in the finals. And just, congrats and good luck with the next one.
Where and against who?
It is Drake it, Drake it. And I think it's up in Saugus this weekend.
Oh, it's not in the Garden?
Uh, no.
One more, one more.
One more, this is the, the finals.
Then the Garden, I, I think, I think.
No, I thought that was the championship.
This is
Oh, no, no, they're, they're just
Championship is this weekend in Saugus.
They're not going to play the Garden this year.
Oh, no, not the Garden this year, okay.
And the Foxborough Cheerleaders took home the 2023 Winter Small Coed Team State Champs as well last weekend. So called them out as well.
Fabulous. Mine wasn't, mine's not so exciting that. I just wanted to say that, you know, good or bad, you guys stuck with me. Nobody else pulled, turned in papers. And I don't think, I think Bob said there's nothing contested, so.
Nope. And we had, at least nothing's empty. That was my worry is we had, up until the moment, I think Board of Health was sitting with no one. So we have a taker for every seat as well, which is fabulous.
Good, good. So just remember, everybody is still as important, go out, cast your, cast your vote. And the other thing that, we haven't seen it yet, I don't, I don't think. But just a heads up, the PIP committee approved up to $5,000 for the veterans markers. So I know they already had money. I believe they went to them looking for maybe $15,000. They weren't sure if that was the top offer or not, so they thought it was a great project. And so whatever, it takes up to 5,000, which I don't think should, because I think their total was about 5,000. So those markers are, are going to, are going to happen. I think they were, they were reaching out, too, to maybe find out if there's any, any other, any other markers that, that need to go up, that aren't up. And the other thing I was asked is, you know, and I mean, it's still a little ways away, but maybe they're hoping where these are brand-new markers, new signs, whatever, that maybe they might be able to do something. Maybe each, maybe one selectman could take each as they go up or whatever. I think they want to maybe just tell the people, you know, in that community, right where marker is, they might want to come just to, you know, unveil it or whatever. So anyhow, I think maybe, that was from Joanie Gattani. That wasn't necessarily from
We've got a lot of donations on promotions, too, as well.
I know, I know. So anyhow, I just wanted to throw that out. That's, that was great news for them to have it funded.
All right, great. So I think we've got five, six action items here.
Okay, you ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Motion to approve five one-day beer and wine licenses for chubby chickpea mobile DBA tap beer truck from 12 to 4:00 p.m. April 22nd, April 29th, May 20th, September 16th, and November 4th, 2023.
And these are at Normandy Farms. We've seen these before, nothing new. They know that they can do up to 10. And they know that they're getting
It's 30.
Well, they can do 30, sorry.
It's 30.
So they're, they're around 10, though, so they know, they know how many they can do. Okay. All right, cool.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept a donation of labor and equipment valued at $1,800 from New Hook Contracting to distribute loam on the town common.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation of $200 from Rainbow Bagel Inc. on the Tooties, 200 from Asian Fifan Foxborough Mandarin, 500 from Barrows Insurance Agency, 500 from FT Donuts, and 3,000 from Rudd Realty Group totaling 4,400 for the Fox in the Borough Program.
Second.
Under further discussion, I was confusing those with the markers in my head, even though I had read it. So
It's not markers, it's Fox, Fox in the Borough. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to
Another great project.
Yes, yes, another great project.
Motion to accept the 925 donation for Tai Chi classes and history of play performance from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Kathy Kelly to the Council on Aging Advisory Board for a term to end May 1st, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Two meeting minutes.
Okay, motion to approve the February 28th, 2023 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close to killer minutes, by the way.
Good job.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the March 7th, 2023 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
And under further discussion, that was just the meeting from us going to, to school committee. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. And motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone. Get home safely.